I'm gonna go on call us to order. It is 6:31. And Commissioner Hasty, would you open us up with prayer, please?
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you've given us for health, strength, peace, and for this great country and community that we live in. We play a special blessings for our military and all of our first responders, those that serve us on a daily basis. We play a special prayer for the folks in our community that have suffered over the recent storms and especially to the Tudor family. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for our community that will be correct and right in thy sight. Be with us in all that we do, these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Mr. Berry, will you call the roll place?
Altizer. Coker.
Here.
Evans. Hardwick. Hasty.
Here.
Longmire.
Here.
Martin. Slattery.
Here.
And Silkwood. That's all nine.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is an acceptance of the agenda. Before entertaining a motion accepted, I want to actually entertain a motion to amend the, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to move up the discussion of Westlake. I know, I'm assuming that's what most people are here to talk about. And so to keep y'all from having to wait an hour or so to get to that, we're just going to kind of move that up on the agenda. Not, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Now I'll entertain the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
But we got two motions and a second. All that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. And so we'll move into public hearings. We have two scheduled for the night. One, it does not, was there anybody that intended to sign up for the subdivision regulations amended, public hearing that did not? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare that public hearing closed and then open up the public hearing on the Westlake and Hendersonville Framework Plan. We have eight people that have signed up for that. What it should do is, I will call you up to the podium if you would state your name, give your address, introduce yourself. And actually, Director, did you have some comments before we opened up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we'll, we'll have just a really quick, brief overview of the plan to kind of familiarize everyone before the public comment period. But, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of, to discuss kind of this process and how it moves forward so everybody is familiar with it. So this is a, an amendment to our future land use and framework plan. And this amendment, it's not a zoning change, but it's an amendment to our future land use that kind of dictates what we would like to see in the, in the future. And it can be used for city rezonings or individual rezonings to support, support those different things. And in that process, this is actually the planning commission, so the planning commission's that's here on this board, then they make the final decision on what that future land use plan is. And tonight we have that, this is the first public hearing that we've had. So as a part of our process, we have, we've received a lot of public input and certainly appreciate everybody, you can be a lot of different places. So we really appreciate you being here this evening. And we really appreciate all of the involvement and the participation that we've had through this Westlake plan. So we really appreciate that. And also want to let, let folks know, and you'll see as later, as the planning commission discusses this particular topic in, in looking at what action to take, that they, they are hearing from the community as well. They'll hear from the community tonight, but over the last several months, as the community has been digesting the proposal, they've heard from the community, as well as the planning staff has heard from the community as well. And, and so we'll look at that tonight and go through, go through the plan. And if there's any changes to the plan, then the plan may not be approved this evening. It may be held over until April, the April meeting. But it's, but if that occurs, I believe with what we're, the process at which we're gonna go through, everyone would be aware of what those changes would be for the, for the next draft of that, if there is a, is a following draft of that. And, and in looking at it, in, in the creation of the plan, of the West Main Street plan or the Westlake, Westlake plan, is looking to try to balance all of the different things, looking at the things that we're all concerned about, about residential density and how that impacts the flow of traffic and congestion and, and other issues. So definitely the planning staff is sensitive to that. The planning commission is certainly sensitive to that as well, as well as we have a lot of the elected officials here from BOMA. And so they hear from the community as well. And so they're aware of that. And trying to balance those, those issues with the issues of, we have West Main Street and trying to look at ways, you know, in which we can entice more investment and stabilize and, and further secure and stabilize the existing businesses that are located along West, West Main Street, which a lot of those are local, local businesses. So we want to do everything that we can, but just trying to, trying to come up with what, you know, what that balance is. And at the end of the day, one of the things that I want to share with the, with the audience and share with the, the commission as well, is the proposal that we have before us this evening that, that we're going to discuss. This is just a proposal. It's not the best plan. It is a, it is a plan. The best plan is gonna be, whatever the resolution of this is gonna be at the very end, you know, could be what's being proposed, could be something with, especially from the residential side of things, could be something that, that is reduced in density from what the proposal is, could be radically reduced in density and, and have no residential element in it as well. Even if that's the case, you know, part of the whole planning process and part of what the planning commissions, you know, go is with this, with this project, is to get the vision and for the, of the community for this area. And in getting that vision, the end result of this is, is trying to gauge what is the values that our community has. And that we want this plan because it is a significant and vital part of our community. We want the plan to represent what that, what those values are. And I think this process and, and with everyone, not just the folks that have come here this evening to hear or, or to speak to or just to see what's going on, but all of the hundreds of people that have been involved and the thousands of people that have actually looked at the plan and, and participated in this process. So I kind of wanted to, to share that. So without me talking any further on it, I want to introduce Kevin Tilbury. He's with Kimley Horn. He's, he's with the consultants that helped come up with the, the proposal and working with the planning staff. And he's just gonna give a brief overview. This isn't gonna be super detailed if you were at the Jean Brown Elementary. That was sort of a deep dive into everything and I think everybody is pretty familiar with it. So he's just gonna go through some of the, the highlights. And Kevin, if you can do that with the chairman's pleasure, that would be great.
Kevin, if you would introduce yourself, I don't know, Director, introduce you a little bit, if you give us a brief introduction of your background, your name, background, who you're with and how.
Absolutely. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come to speak with you today. My name is Kevin Tilbury. I'm with Kimley Horn. We are the consulting firm that was hired by the planning department to, to help develop Westlake and Hendersonville, the plan that we're gonna present to you tonight. Okay. So with that, again, this, I know that there's a lot of discussion that needs to take place. So we're not gonna spend a lot of time on the plan. We just wanted to refresh everyone on some of the high points of the plan. So, you know, just to echo Keith's comments that, you know, when, when the planning department first envisioned this study, they really, you know, they could see the developments start to creep up the, the Gallatin Road quarter and, and know that, you know, this area will probably be ripe for change. And they wanted, they saw this as an opportunity to do something different, unique and, and, you know, special and to bring real value to the West Main Quarter. And that's what this plan is an attempt to do. And so, you know, we're definitely interested in hearing the discussion today on, on, you know, whether you think that we hit the mark on that or whether you think some changes are needed. So, and, and just to reiterate again what Keith said, we want to really be clear about what this plan is and what this plan is not. So what this plan is really intended to do is, it's a vision. So it, it's gonna provide guidance to staff, it's gonna provide guidance to you all. When, you know, when you're considering future rezoning requests, should you recommend that request or not to BOMA? This is the plan that you're gonna consult when you make that decision. It's gonna provide clarity and transparency, or transparency to people who may own property on West Main Street or to residents, so they have a sense of what the vision is for this area for what's coming. And it's going to guide development to the appropriate location. So we saw this as an opportunity to, you know, to learn about what's happened in the past and then to make recommendations for what makes the most sense. But what it is not, again, this is not a rezoning. So this is not going to be a carte blanche, you know, once this plan is adopted to go out and make changes. There's still gonna have to be a rezoning process that you all will consider along with BOMA. It's not going to increase density overall in this, in, in this area or the number of units. And we'll show you the data in a minute that sort of backs up that, that statement. And then the last thing, it's not going to obligate property owners to do anything. If you own property in West Main, you know, if you don't want to change the way it is today, you don't have to. This plan does not obligate you to do so. So I, I mentioned it doesn't increase the dwelling units, and I know that's an area of particular concern, so I just wanted to spend a little bit of time on that. At the beginning of the study, we did a market analysis that would determine, you know, what is the demand for residential in this, in this area? And so what our analysis found is within the market area, there's demand for about 6,000 dwelling units. So that, this area could potentially absorb that many. Currently, you're entitled through existing zoning, so if you wanted to go out and build stuff today, you could build up to 2,700 dwelling units in, in the West Main study area. That said, the Westlake plan represents about, in its current form, about 2,000 to 2,500 units. So in theory, you know, we could develop a plan that could absorb up to 6,000 units and the market would support that. But we didn't do that because we wanted to do right by you all and by the residents' vision, which is not to significantly increase density or the number of units along the corridor. And so what you see here are two maps. The map on the left is what is, is where multifamily is currently allowed by right, by current zoning. And then the map on the right is what is recommended in the Westlake plan. And so not only did the plan not increase the number of units, but we also attempted to put that in the, in the right location. So areas that, when combined with commercial development would bring real value to the corridor and not put it in places where we don't want to see that type of density. So we'll be interested to hear, is, does this, the plan on the right, does this hit the mark or not? We're, we're definitely interested in hearing that discussion today. So just briefly, what the plan itself does, it divides, this is our study area, and you can see that there are three sort of character areas, Anchor West, Midway and Dockside, and each one sort of has its own vision and plan for each of those sub-areas. So the plan includes a vision for land use. Again, this is not a rezoning. It's advisory in nature. It includes a range of intended uses and it's intended to be a long-term vision. So this is what done looks like on, you know, on this section of the quarter. But there's still more decisions that have to be made before this actually becomes final. In, in a few locations, we put together what are called focus area plans. These are illustrative visions of, of places that we see are, are real opportunities for really interesting or unique development. They're not site plans or development proposals, they're simply illustrative visions. So we want to be very clear on that. So we want this quarter to have identity and a sense of place. So along with recommendations for land use, we've included recommendations for gateway treatments and branding. So things that we can do to give the quarter a, a real sense of identity, a sense of place and belonging. One of the things that we've heard, you know, when we've talked with, with folks that, that live and own businesses in the quarter is that, you know, they, they want to see, you know, before they invest in the quarter, they want to see, you know, that the city is going all in as well, that they want to, you know, invest in creating a quality place. So we've also recommended opportunities for public investment along the quarter, which could be intersection improvements, it could be streetscape, it could be some of those gateway and branding things that we talked about. And those are all things that are identified in the plan as well. So that, that's just a brief overview of the plan. I think, Keith, if I'm correct, we're gonna turn it over now to Grant, is that right? Okay. So Grant, I will turn it over to you to, to provide a little more clarification.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, we, we wanted to look at this and we, we put out a question and answer on our website that kind of gave some, some typical questions and answers that, that people have had and may have that we could think of and, and. Oh, sure. Yeah, probably do that, might be a little bit better too, so. Great, thank you. But yes, we, we were, we, we put out a question and answer on our website that, and, and we had a density map that shows the difference in the density with our current zoning versus the, versus the proposed plan's land use, what, which what a future zoning would be based on. And, and Kevin kind of, he showed that map that, that showed that the density being moved from the peninsula and the number of units and, and showed that being moved to the focus areas along with the corridor of, of West Main. So, and, and looking at that, what we were, what we were looking at mainly was that, just basically, one of the questions was, what is the purpose of the Westlake plan? Will the Westlake plan increase the number of multifamily residential units above what is currently allowed by the existing zoning and how does this differ from the current town center plan and the Old Town zoning? So we had two main goals with Westlake and amending the, the current land use plan. One of those was to help revitalize Main Street and, in, in order to help ensure the long-term economic stability and safety with that, you'll be in the city's connection with, with Madison and Intruway and Hendersonville. We wanted to try to give more ability to, to redevelop that area and, and just spots along that area, not, you know, not the entirety of it because we, we, we don't want to just open up the doors to, to full-on development. And we, we want to try to, to, to give areas that, that were in higher need of redevelopment the ability, you know, more ability to do that. So, and, and looking at that, the, you know, the other goal was to reduce multifamily residential units, both overall and in the Walton Ferry Peninsula, change the current zoning to preserve the remainder of the single-family homes in the area, mainly south of Imperial. Some of it went up shovel on, on this plan. And basically what we, what, kind of what the plan does, it's, it kind of uses those units that were, what was in that area, remove from the peninsula to provide opportunities for a commercial-focused redevelopment of aging structures along the West Main Corridor. And that's, that's the purpose of the focus areas. In anticipation of this plan and at the request of citizens in the area, the Board of Mayor and Alderman voted to decrease the density of Old Town Residential from 15 units an acre to five units an acre in 2022. This, this was something that, that was done with that, that zoning, which that's located north portion, in the north portion of the Walton Ferry Peninsula. That, that area previously allowed up to approximately 4,200 units. And the current zoning now for this whole entire area allows up to 2,714 multifamily and mixed-use units as we stand right now with our current zoning after that change. The Westlake plan proposes to reduce that number to 2,475 units, 456 of those which could be approved or denied as part of a future proposed plan development. So that would, it would, that would require an extra approval after this, this land use plan. And that, that area is the area shown on Free Hill there at Midway, the, in the light blue. And we've included maps to show the major reduction in potential density from the peninsula, and that's, that's what we were talking about earlier with, with Kevin's map that he had on his presentation. So I guess really, in looking at this, three of the most important focus areas where there's potential for residential units with a commercially-based plan include Dockside there by the lake. That is that area along Sanders Ferry Road. And it's been zoned as a potential small three-to-four-story downtown area with the Old Town commercial zoning for many years as part of the town center plan. We, however, we haven't heard anybody folk, voice any support for keeping that as part of the plan. I think we've, we've, you know, and despite the fact that it's been zoned that way for years, we, we don't hear any support for that. So unless anybody, you know, has, you know, supports that, I think that, you know, we could end up with a commercial land use more like what's on West Main Street. And so.
Great. Could you speak up a little more, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me try to get that a little closer to me, too. But, but yes, I was just saying that if we make some changes to this plan, if the planning commission looks at this and, and, and based on some public comment, you know, we, we could change that to just a commercial zoning, much like kind of what's on, on West Main now. So just, just, there's different options for that. And the other area, one of the other areas is the Main Street Focus Area. That includes the wholer Family Fund Center property and mix of non-conforming uses to the east of that property. And that's the area in the pink over there. Basically, what we've done there is assign some of those units that were on the peninsula to that, that were, that could be part of a, it would be commercially-based, but it could include a residential component if there's a commercial, commercial development proposed with, with this. So, so that would, that would include a zoning that would allow, basically use residential units as a, as a catalyst for, for redevelopment of that parcel and, and all of those parcels. And that is basically what that focus area is, is used for. And the residential units, a lot of times for developers are used as, as a, as a component to help offset the cost of demolition. So that's, that's really some of the main reasoning in doing that. And I guess one of the other areas that we had was the Free Hill Focus Area. It's proposed south of the intersection of the Free Hill, Free Hill Road. And that includes some of the, some car lots and, and glass office building there. And Westlake is currently proposed to allow potential for residential units with commercial focused redevelopment at that location as well. The rest of the corridor, though, in general, other than the Anchor West Focus District, Midway, and what's, what's already, what's already zoned multifamily there at Midway at the interchange with 386, everything else is, is commercial and it's, it would be commercial uses. So in looking at that, that's, that's, you know, we want to try to provide opportunities to keep properties from becoming dilapidated to a point where the land values, the surrounding properties don't make reinvestment feasible and, 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 you know, try to make it where the area is not hard to encourage redevelopment. And, you know, it's a typical, but successful strategy typically for cities to, to use those, those residential, the residential market demand to push the, the commercial redevelopment where it's still viable. And the Westlake's proposed attempt at balancing the citizens' requests to help keep, to keep the West Main Corridor from failing, but also reduce and relocate the potential residential units away from the peninsula. One other question I want to add in here, and this is something we've gotten a lot, is just, was there a traffic study conducted? And we kind of hit on this at the last meeting, and I'll try to run this really quickly. Traffic study is generally done for a smaller area for specific development where current or proposed identified uses that have the trips associated with them. Public works typically determines if a traffic study would be required by the developer to study the impact of the specific development and whether those extra trips are enough strain on the road or intersection to require the associated traffic improvement. The different, different uses have different daily traffic count trips and a large lands, large-scale land use plan proposing a broad range of uses would not be able to really identify the particular uses for each of those parcels. And, but, so basically, a traffic study would be ineffective because we, we would be guessing at, at what those uses would be. So, and, and also, a traffic study for an area that large would be, be very expensive. And, but, but really, it's like, until we know what uses specifically are gonna be there, it, it would be, and that's, that's what we would do on a development-by-development case basis to determine what improvements we could require from the developer. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Grant. Director Freed, did you have? Okay. Folks, we're about to open it up for public comment or the public hearing on this. Wanted to just, if, if this, you're kind of new to this process, want to explain kind of what's going on. First, I want to just thank Director Freed and his staff for just for the transparency that they brought with this. We first, first started talking to this guy six months ago on this. And this is actually, tonight will be the first time that the planning commissions actually get to kind of dive into it on that. So before we do that, want to hear from y'all on that. This is, if you want to speak, if there's questions that you want us to ask, this is time for the public to speak on this. If you did not get a chance to sign up, I think we've got eight folks that signed up. I'll, I'll hold it open for a moment then afterwards. And then what we're probably gonna do, I think the director alluded to this, we're not gonna vote on anything tonight. This is just kind of open up for discussion. So we'll, we're bringing it back next month on that. So if there's things that you hear you want to add feedback to, please do that on that. But this is, y'all's time to speak right now during this public hearing. And so with that, I will open up the public hearing. And first, first name that we have signed up is Brad Copeland. Mr. Copeland, if you would step up to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your address and.
I'm Brad Copeland. I reside at 113 Imperial Point on the Walton Ferry Peninsula. My wife and I own 10 properties in Hendersonville, six of which are in the proposed Dockside District. I want to speak in opposition to the Westlake plan. While the plan could bring some positive improvements to the Main Street Corridor, I believe the proposed residential preservation district would have a troublesome economic impact on our citizens. With the high price of land and high costs related to building materials and labor in today's building environment, the only way to achieve attainable housing is through appropriate density. This proposal takes that density away in, in this particular district. The cost to build a single-family home in the proposed residential preservation district would well exceed the median home price in the Hendersonville area, placing the dream of homeownership well outside of the reach of the average person seeking workforce housing. That is currently achievable under the current Old Town Plan. For some who already own a home, affordability isn't a consideration. But for our children and our grandchildren, this plan does not support them achieving homeownership and becoming our neighbors. They simply will not be able to afford a home, and anything in this area would be out of reach for them. Finally, I would just ask you to consider the, the impact of the proposed plan to the people who have made significant financial investments into the Old Town areas. If the board should determine to pass the plan as it's written, I would just ask that you consider some sort of grandfathering of properties that were purchased under the Old Town Plan. Those, those were bought and purchased with the plan of the current density and use for those properties that would be stripped away under this, under this proposed plan. These people made purchases based on the development assumptions tied to the, the properties. And this would represent a severe economic impact on them because they based that on the current zoning and use. Those people who purchased these properties based it on creating attainable housing for people in the OTR and to create affordable commercial uses within the OTC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Next up, we have John Prentis. And I know you've done this before, Mr. Prentis, so.
John Prentis, 111 Airflow Drive for.
John Prennis, 111 Airflow Drive. For the last 47 years, so I've seen change in Hendersonville. Even over a few years ago, had a finger in a bit of that change. I too oppose this plan, although I will tell you for different reasons than you just heard. Some parts of it I actually like. Others, I'd like you to reconsider. One of the things I actually like is paying some attention to the Rockland Road Imperial Intersection. That's Dodge'em Cars. I don't know how many go through there, but Dodge'em Cars is about the nicest thing I can say about it. While I'm not a big fan of a roundabout, that may well be the only viable solution. It's a very unique set of intersections right there at, uh, again, if we can just tone down the Dodge'em Cars aspect of it, that would be good. Because I really think if we improve Rockland Road, we have a shot at holding down some of the traffic during rush hour coming out of Nashville on Gallatin Road. It does give you a viable way to get down on the peninsula without going all the way to Walton Ferry, Saunders Ferry. That needs to keep being looked at. It really does. I like that concept. Other concepts I'm not that crazy about. Biggest problem I see, and I'm going to try to be as nice about this as I can, is some blatant salesmanship at work here. Luxury hotel and multi-use building. I have no idea what the difference between a hotel and a luxury hotel from a zoning point of view is. Besides that, where you show it is on a very narrow strip of land that is barely big enough to support those little buildings that are there now with minimal parking. You can't go on the core property. That ain't going to happen. Uh, that needs to be looked at some more. Uh, I, I don't even care if it's not a luxury hotel. That is an issue jamming in right there. Then there's multi-use. And folks, I got to tell you, multi-use, ground floor, retail, top two floors, residential, that's high density. I don't care how you want to define it. That's high density. We have more than enough of that on this peninsula now. Retail, I don't have a big problem with. That would be kind of good if we could do that. Uh, the term walkable, well, once you get anywhere, it's walkable. Uh, now, in New York City and Brooklyn and places in the Northeast, there's a lot of that kind of development. There really is. It came about over the years of total and complete overcrowding. Now, I have yet to run into anybody that said, oh, golly gee darn, I wish this was New York. I haven't even heard anybody say, I wish it was Nashville, for goodness sake. Uh, we don't need to go in that direction. And as far as density is concerned, looking at the numbers from what theoretically would have been possible over the last several years, yeah, they got the arithmetic right. But let's look at real world. What's there now? When you go to single-family only, that sounds great, until you read the rest of it when it says 10 units per acre. Uh, folks, once again, and I was a math major, uh, 10 units per acre is high density. I don't care how you cut that. It really is. And I think we have an overabundance of tall skinnies right now. Uh, I really do. Then, then throw in the extra roads that are shown on the plan. I'm not sure how you're going to acquire all that right away, because I don't think a single one of them has existing right away. And one in particular, I think, needs to have a close look, is that road you're showing going from Cages connecting to Canfield Place into Gallatin Road. I, that would make an intersection entirely too close to Sanders Ferry. And getting out there right now is, again, Dodge'em Cars at best. I, I, I just don't see any way to make that any form of a thoroughfare. I really don't. Uh, I see the pretty pictures of median and signs and all of that. Uh, yeah, it's pretty. It really is. But it's sure going to screw up left turns off of Gallatin Road into existing buildings, existing businesses. And as far as the Westlake, west end of Main Street needing appearance improvement, yeah, I'll buy that. I will. There's absolutely nothing in this plan that deals directly with that. How about if you take a look at some form of tax incentive, appraisal relief, assessive relief, some kind of form that says, hey, Mr. Property Owner, if you will bring this building up to a current appen, appearance standards, we'll give you a tax break for some number of years. We'll not reappraise your property for some number of years. That's, kind of stuff is done all the time when you're trying to attract new businesses. I don't know of a single reason why a plan like that couldn't be worked out to improve the appearance of West Main. Now, do I think West Main could look better? Yeah. But one of the things I think is blatantly obvious, it is not holding down our ability to grow. Apparently, nobody thinks it's too ugly to come in here, because we are growing now faster than our ability to keep up with infrastructure. Um, the, uh, I made some notes here, I got here and I'm having trouble reading my own writing. The surveys that were mentioned, uh, I finally read the fine print when I got it on a computer screen I could actually read, uh, and read those. The overwhelming majority of the comments made had to do with appearance and traffic. Uh, traffic study, yeah, is expensive. I'll offer my own traffic study for West Main Street. It stinks. Uh, one, yeah, one more car is one more too many. And it's got to the point, that's not just rush hour, guys. That's all day. All day. Uh, now, the other comments that I've heard, and I'd like to think I misheard, but I don't think I did, Mr. Mr. Freed tonight, is this has no need to go before the Board of Mayor and Altmann. I think maybe you ought to reread your zoning ordinance, pages 27 through 30. Yeah, there's some debatable terms in there, but what does this, what am I really going to call this plan? Am I going to call it a flud, a lewd, or poop, or what? This plan involves major rezoning. It involves significant changes to roads, which does impact the road and transportation plan, which does in fact clearly require BOMA approval. I'm going to make a strong suggestion that your plan, when it's completed, go to BOMA. And part of completing the plan is to put the required zoning on the whole thing. If you don't do that, you're going to open a big door for spot zoning requests. Spot zoning, I think you know, is a slippery, slippery slope. Once you approve Bill's spot zoning, Mike's going to come up and say, well, you did his. Why can't you do mine? Or I'm going to sue you. Uh, it's a slippery slope when you get into spot zoning. And if you do not include zoning with your future plan, you're just begging for it. In fact, it says in the questions and answers, you'll take zoning to the board on request. That's spot zoning. I don't care how you cut it. I don't see anything else in my notes. I appreciate y'all's work. It's, it's time to see me. I know. And trust me, write this one down. You're a go please, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Prennis. Next up, we have Nathan Green. Mr. Green?
Trying not to fall down on the podium. Thank you, guys, for all being here tonight. My name is Nathan Green, and I live at the end of Sanders Ferry. I've lived in Hendersonville for 15 years and had family here for over 45.
Mr. Green, will you give us your address, too? That's just.
Uh, sorry. 167 Waters Edge Lane. Um, I am currently here to kind of put a little bit different perspective on the discussion. Currently, the two and a half mile, three and a half, two and a half mile wide, three and a half mile long stretch of Sanders Ferry and Walter Ferry Peninsula hold the highest level of population and traffic density in the whole county. We already have more apartments, more condos, more town homes, and more people than anywhere else if you take the same footprint. Yet, we're being told that we need new developments in new areas. And I agree with Mr. Prennis in the fact that there is some great salesmanship going on here. However, our civil services from our teachers to our police officers are overwhelmed. We've seen more animal collisions with vehicles in the last two years than in the previous 10. We've seen traffic quadruple in volume in the last five years. We've been told that a traffic study is too expensive. And I think that we're getting caught up into nomenclature here. And we need to be clear about what the citizens of this community are asking for. We want somebody to stand out there and count the vehicles. We want somebody to say, how many cars, how many trucks, how many dump trucks, how many semis are coming through our city right now? To you, Mr. Green, I can understand that in the logistics community, that this may not meet the standard criteria for a traffic study. But the bottom line is, we don't know how many cars are here. So, the notion that we can make a decision about what we're going to do with this area going forward, whether we consider it to be a better solution or a worse solution, the bottom line is, we don't know what we don't know. When we ask how much property taxes would go up, how much strain on civil services, dead silence. When we can't get, we can't get answers to basic questions. And although the OTR does allow for higher density development, as has been stated and as has been fought for the last 40 years, we can see that that's not going to happen. However, the word is out on Hendersonville. And developers know that all they have to do is come in front of this body and convince you guys that they're going to do what they say they're going to do, and then they don't do it. Yet, we don't find them. We don't stop construction projects. They just do what they want to do. In fact, we have a development right now where they moved rain, the, the rain catch that they were supposed to have for the location. They decided to move it. City said, oh, well, I guess they changed the, the, the planning on it. So now, whenever it rains, it creates a torrent of rainwater that flushes into the neighborhood downstream, flooding homes that never experienced this issue before. Now, this is just one development. This new promote, proposal could be hundreds, maybe even thousands of new developments. We already have major runoff issues. We don't know how much water is going into the lake. Yet, Mallard Park has eroded almost 50 feet since it was first opened. If you take a look at satellite footage from 25 years ago to today, you will see that the water line extended almost 40 feet away from the benches in Mallard Park. Now, the water's to the benches. Yet, we need more paving. We need to cover up more green space. After the one meeting to hear the community concerns on the Westlake Plan, all of the comments and the concerns from the community were deleted. Why? Why? All of these grand visions are debt financed. There's no plan to address cost overruns or inflation, no plan to protect the city. They offer no financial guarantees of any kind. Inflation is rampant and recession looms, yet we're supposed to trust new developers once again. Our taxes, our taxes will skyrocket. Crime will skyrocket. Our civil services will be overwhelmed and our lives will forever be diminished. We will be stuck in traffic while a few developers lounge on the beach. It already takes upwards of five or six light rotations to turn left on the Sanders Ferry off of Main Street during rush hour. Right now, right now. It used to take me 18 minutes to leave my house at the end of Sanders Ferry, drive to Walmart, pick something up quick, and get back to my house. 18 to 22 minutes. Now it takes 32. If the city absolutely needs the funds from this rezoning that we're promised, we could write tickets for out-of-state expired tags and fill the city coffers for the next 25 years. I was behind one from Wes Quinson on the way over here today. Developers only see green space, and they see a next project. Construction workers see the next job site. Bankers only care about the money. This is not a job site. This is not a project or an investment opportunity. This is our home. We chose to live here. Now, granted, I understand that the zoning as it stands now would give us a lot of the things that we don't want, but we fought those. So if the true goal of this commission is to bring something better for this, for this city, the first thing I suggest is table it. Let's get some real information. Let's have some people count some cars. Let's have some crime studies done. Let's find out how many hundreds of thousands of gallons of new water are being flooded into the lake. Let's find out how many teachers we're going to need. Let's have, let's find out how much crime is going to go up. How many firefighters do we need? How many new fire trucks are we going to need? The notion that we should trust everything that's in this plan without finding out true facts is insane. It's insane. Let the free market work like it's supposed to. In the last five years, we've seen businesses and new operations open up on Main Street because there's demand for it. Because people want it. Because there's entrepreneurs out there that said, you know what? There's demand for it, and I'm going to start a business. And they did. And we've supported that. We don't have to tear down other businesses to make this happen. We don't have to take away from the community so a few people can get rich. This is all about Lakeview Apartments, plain and simple. This has nothing to do with what we need. This is all about what a few people want. When we're late for church, the next practice or work, they'll be fine up at the country club. If an ambulance or fire truck or a police officer is struck in traffic, it won't be on the way to their house. It'll be on the way to mine. Recent work at the corner of Sanders Ferry and Main Street blocked traffic multiple times during rush hour traffic without notice, causing huge delays in traffic snarl. That was to add 300 feet of sidewalk. Now, are we here to believe that if we start up these massive new developments, luxury hotel apartments and, you know, new high-density living areas throughout the community, that we're not going to have these same problems at a scale exponentially higher? Now, we've said multiple times that if you don't live on this peninsula and you're not going to suffer the consequences of these decisions, then you must abstain from making these decisions. We must take pause and understand the impacts of development, the, the development that we have already approved. We need to take a step back, take a deep breath. We don't have to worry about growth in Hendersonville anymore. I promise you that. Plenty of people are moving here every day. It's like 150 people a day, but we don't know. Because this commission and other people within the, the, the civil bureaucracy do not want to find out the answer to these questions. You know why? Because you already know the answer to these questions. The notion that we would allow some of this development is ludicrous. We don't know anything. We need to table the Westlake Plan and commission and, and commission expansive studies to understand traffic, runoff, crime, civil impact to our schools, police, and EMS. We need to understand the impact to our wildlife and our green spaces. We've already added 15 minutes of drive time to the daily commute on our, on our peninsula right now since I moved here. That's four days a year added to me living in my car because of decisions made by bodies like this. We don't have to make zoning restrictions re, retroactive to the points that have been made to people that have made investments in the past in the OTR plan. No problem. Put a time bomb on it. Grandfather of men for 10 years. If you can't figure out what you're going to do within 10 years, tough cookies. I ask all of you respectfully to consider the impacts to the people that live here. Take some time. This may be the greatest plan that's ever existed. How could we possibly know? We've not taken any time to understand the truth about what these impacts would be. Every time we've asked for information, we get sidestepped. Every time we tried to understand how these decisions are being made, we get stonewalled. We get blamed for being anti-development. That's not the case here, people. We have lives to live. We're, we, we moved here to live this way. If I wanted to live on the edge of Panama City Beach, I'd have moved to Panama City Beach. Please, take time. Get a real traffic study done. Go up to Vols State and talk to the logistics department up there and have a graduate program started up. Bring them down here and give them six months of college credit. And let's put college students on every single corner in the city and have them count every single car. Why not? How much does that cost? Does it cost 200 grand? Because that's how much this plan cost us. How much are we paying in consulting dollars right now? So I know I've gone over my time, and I apologize for that. But at the end of the day, I just want to be clear that this is not anti-development. This is not anti-progress. This is anti-misinformation. This is anti-no knowledge. If you can convince me through the, the, through, through data that this is the best for our city, I'll be the first one to stand up and say, I'm all on board. Until then, you're cheating us all. You have to take time and learn this information. And if you don't, then it matters not what you say. Please, table the Westlake Plan. Take some time to understand what's necessary. We don't need a yes or no vote on this right now. We don't need an up or down vote on this right now. We need to find out what's going on with our city. Take some time. Learn some more. That's all I have. Thank you very much. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green. As he alluded to, we do have time limits and I'm trying to give some grace so people can, go over a little bit of time so they can say what's on their mind. I would like to mention though, I go to evangelical church, I like hollering out amen and stuff like that, but if we can keep those at a minimum and appreciate that, then let's let the speaker speak so the meeting can flow on that. Next up, Pat Raymer.
Thank you very much for your time, consideration and listening to me. And, believe it or not, I think I am more qualified. I live at 214 Sterling Road in Hendersonville. Thirty-nine-year resident of Hendersonville, thirty-three-year resident on Sterling Road. Believe it or not, I live further out Sterling Road, I mean further out Saunders Ferry Road than Mr. Green does. He lives Water Edge, I live on Sterling Road. If you drive down my driveway and you don't put your foot on the brakes, you end up in the middle of Old Hickory Lake. Now, you wonder why I'm telling you that. I've driven from Old Hickory Lake to Gallatin Road every day, many times a day, for thirty-three years. I've not heard this said tonight, but it's a fact. Other than the left-hand turn lane onto Imperial Boulevard, that same, that road is the same width as it is today as it was thirty-three years ago today. I've heard police and fire mentioned. And I want you to think about if you was a police chief or the fire chief in this city or the mail post. When you go outside, two weeks ago, coming home from the Y, got behind a school bus, coming outside Saunders Ferry Road was an ambulance, sirens on. Nowhere to pull off, nowhere to get out of the way. If I was a fire chief or a police chief or a first responder, I would be opposed to that specific road having one more vehicle allowed on it. Don't do it, don't do it. When you get behind the mail carrier going outside Saunders Ferry Road, guess what? You either stay behind them or you wait for an opening to take a quick pass on him, either around a curve, over a hill or something. He has to block the road going out and coming in every day to deliver the mail. The trash collectors, same thing, this morning, going outside Saunders Ferry Road, trash truck. Can't get around it, can't see, so what do you do? You take a chance. And, and there's just limited, very limited space for a vehicle to get out of the way when needed for these first responders. So, my opposition to this plan is specifically, I moved here to that peninsula thirty-three years ago. Mr. Green mentioned his subdivision. In thirty-three years, this city has approved apartments, condos, townhouses, houses, subdivisions. If you knew the population or the density of that peninsula today versus thirty-three years ago when I moved there, it, it's innumerable. And, and, and I just can't imagine allowing, and I'm not against growth and improvements, I think Gallatin Road, I think the, the businesses there need a lot of improvements. But I just can't imagine you allowing anything that would allow more vehicles onto Saunders Ferry Road. It's been mentioned before, getting off of Gallatin Road, going outside Saunders Ferry Road is a nightmare. In the mornings, coming off Saunders Ferry Road, getting on the Gallatin Road, it's a nightmare. Why do you wanna add more vehicles, commercial, residential or whatever? Do not allow more vehicles on this road without improving the road. And I just don't see where you've got the space to do it. You've got guardrails or you've got the lake on one side or the other. I've heard a lot of talk about things, but nothing specifically about moving vehicles on and off this road and allowing, please don't allow more vehicles on, on this road, it just shouldn't be. That's my main opposition. You've grown that peninsula on top of me for thirty-three years and you've added cars, trucks, you've added more on me for thirty-three years than should be allowed. And I'm here to say, don't put any more on that road without major changes to that road. And I don't see how you can do it, that's your job, not mine. And I appreciate your time if you do, but it, it's just, it's, it's just not good, I don't think. So, I wanna say no for the reason of the traffic, the vehicles and the growth. And you got a lot more projects to get straightened out, this Gallatin Road situation and all that, but please leave my Saunders Ferry Peninsula, my Saunders Ferry Road alone. I've had enough for thirty-three years. And, so, I think that's all I got to say. Let me see. Yeah, it, it's, it's just not feasible on that road to do what, what growth would allow it to do without making some major changes. Thank you, appreciate your time, listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Aldermen Skidmore. Or do you just wanna go by Mark tonight? Okay.
I've been called worse. Thank you very much. It's good to see everybody. Again, my name is Mark Skidmore, I'm the alderman from Ward One. Yes, and I live at 209 Neptune Drive on the Walton Ferry roadside of the peninsula. I've lived there most of my life. Actually, I've lived in, in this area for many minutes, well, not all my life, but a tremendous amount, too much I need to say. I know you all have a lot on your agenda tonight and I do know that we are all here and I haven't heard anybody yet in support of, of the Westlake Plan, but I'm gonna go ahead and, and limit my comments to what I know that you all can do and what we as a Board of Aldermen can do. And I'll tell you tonight that I'm against the, the Westlake Plan as, as it, as it proposed this evening. I'm gonna go over a, a couple of things with you guys about the development, but this is first and foremost in my mind that I think that really you all need to do as planners. Because I know that's what the Planning Commission, I used to be a Planning Commissioner, so I know that's what you're really concerned about, is the planning of this. So I don't want you to lose sight in to the people that live there, that have lived there a long time, that have raised their children. And their children's children now are living in the same area. And now you, you know, you're, you're coming with this project. I think it's very important that you, that you listen to that. One of the things that really concerns me about this whole project is the traffic. And I know you've said, had said that tonight, but I don't know, it's been alluded to tonight. I'm, I've been one of the ones that have gotten a barbecue sandwich at Center Point Road. And then by the time I get to McDonald's, the traffic's so bad, hell, I've already finished it. You know, I've already finished my supper. And that is how bad the traffic is. So you can imagine, when we look at this, Westlake at Hendersonville, think of the people that live on the very, on the very end of the peninsula that are coming through and the traffic's, it's a two-lane street going all the way to Gallatin Road. That's not acceptable. And I don't know quite frankly how you're gonna change it. So my question to you is, have you all spoken to the Corps of Engineers? And don't, don't say, no, we haven't because we haven't had a final plan. You need to talk to them now. Have you talked to the Hendersonville Utility District about the water projects and where the sewer projects are going to have to go into this area when it becomes rezoned? Have you done that? We don't know, you might have already, I don't know. You need to let, you need to let us know about that, about that situation. I'm concerned, very much concerned about the high-density developments that you all have proposed. I know that it's lower, but high, let me tell you, high density is high density. And there's no other way of looking about it. And trust me, I know from experience, a thirty-one years' worth on the board. And when you go through, and this is the, a, a couple of things I do wanna talk about, but I will close with this. There's been some comments about that a lot of this doesn't have to go to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. I'm not sure if that's the truth or not, I don't believe it. Because it is a zoning issue and I think it's by state law that any zoning issue comes to you all first and it has to go to the Board of Aldermen. I'm pretty positive that's the case. So I think you're gonna, you know, you need to really look at that and make sure you're, you're doing the right thing on zoning. But you're, and then there was a comment made earlier about traffic study. Well, it's not necessary now. This is the time you need to know about the traffic. This is the time when you're projecting this stuff that you're laying out on the peninsula that we need to know what you're, what you're serious about the study. As I look at the plan, this is what really scares me. It scares the daylights out of me. You know what that plan right there really looks like? It does. Look at it. You've got Gallatin Road that goes, and I don't know how many times anybody has, has gone to, through Gallatin Road to Madison. And if you don't, if you don't, if you think Madison's okay, you know what that looks like right there? Inglewood. It looks like that. And that scares the daylights out of me because we're better than that, you all are better than that. We're Hendersonville. We don't, we don't accept this. And I will close with this. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, there was a, there was a development called the Indian Lake Center. And I happened to be at that time on the Planning Commission and we had all these big plans that what we were gonna do for Indian Lake. And I love Indian Lake, it's been, it's been a good thing for Hendersonville. And, and I supported it back then, I was about halfway, one or the other, depended on what issue was coming up. But as planners back then, we planned Indian Lake to be a certain way to look. And I challenge you all, if you don't believe me, all you gotta do is go to the Planning Department and it will tell you this, or they will show you in archives. Look at the plan that we approved back then and ten to fifteen later, years later, look at it now. It's completely different than what we suggested back then. We suggested three-lane hot, uh, roads, it's down to two, and the traffic starts from the interstate and it goes all the way back to, to Gallatin Road sometimes if it hadn't been for the red lights. So, the best played, the best laid plan sometimes can be a good thing, but it's how they're followed through. And so look at, in, the way Indian Lake was, look at the Festival Center, that's another part, when the one on Rockland Road, that's never even been done. It's just sitting out there, it's vacant land. And we had all these big plans for that. And the Board back in those days even said, this is what we can do with this. And there's no, it has gone to, it's, it's just sitting there. I dare you, drive, just look, it's just vacant land. And then the other thing I do wanna say, I appreciate everybody going and speaking tonight. I'm with you, I agree with you and I'll fight all the way because I will say this, and I mean this with no disrespect to that side of Hendersonville where Indian Lake is, but the Walton Ferry and the Saunders Ferry Peninsula is not Indian Lake. And I thank you for your time and your, and for this, and if you all have any questions after the meeting, I'm sure we'll all, the aldermen that are here will be here. And I thank you again, thank you all, thank you all for coming.
Chala McDonald?
I'll save my time, my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So my name is Eddie Roberson, I'm alderman in Ward Six. I live at ten forty-nine Smoke Rise Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Alderman Martin and members of the Hendersonville Planning Commission. Once being a member of this important body, I wanna thank you for the valuable service that you provide to this city. Your service, as you are aware, is to ensure that our city's growth is manageable and in the public interest. I am here tonight to discuss the Westlake Land, Land Use Proposed Plan. Special thanks to the citizens that are here, I've enjoyed the comments that are here tonight to share their views on the plan. I sincerely believe this, Hendersonville is a better city because of active involvement of its citizens. And I thank you for being here. With that being said, it has been said that those that fail to plan, plan to fail. Benjamin Franklin once said that there's two things that are certain, that's death and taxes. I would like to add one more certain thing and that's population growth. The question is, how do cities manage and control the growth in a common sense manner? One way for a city to manage growth is to adopt a well-thought-out, thoroughly-vetted plan that balances competing interests and protects the way of life for its citizens. Without a plan, I believe the best interests of the city are left to the desires and plans of the few. Public interest is sacrificed for private interest. Uncontrolled and ill-planned growth is like, is, is like, in the city is like a cancer that can lead to undesirable outcomes and urban decay. I wanna congratulate the planning staff for putting forward a plan and I look forward to your deliberations tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this Planning Commission is not the enemy. Ladies and gentlemen, this planning staff is not the enemy. They are trying to plan and they have put forward a plan. Now it's up to be vetted and it's up to be molded to fit the specific needs of our city. Over the last six months, I've attended every public meeting of the plan. I have met privately several times with staff and I have carefully reviewed every aspect of the plan. As expected, there are parts of the plan that I like, but there are some that I don't like. So after hours of study and deliberation, I have some modifications that I would like for you to consider. And I have a proposal. I'm not just gonna come and say I oppose the plan, I wanna put forward a proposal. A straw man that you can look at and if you would pass those out, I appreciate it. This is a, a future proposal that I'd like to discuss tonight. But with that said, I wanna, I want to underscore that I do believe, after consultation with the city attorney and after reviewing TCA Section thirteen dash four dash two oh two, that it is this body's responsibility to adopt a land use plan for Hendersonville. Now, when it comes to zoning, Alderman Skidmore's correct, that's when BOMA will have a say in the zoning. But for a future land, land plan, it's up to this plan, or it's up to this body to make that decision. So, let's look at the plan I, that I have passed out to you. My objectives are pretty simple when I look at an improvement land use plan. There are really four basic components. Number one is to reduce density. The citizens do not want high density. Our traffic cannot stand high, more high density. So the first objective, when I looked at this plan, to come up with an alternative plan was to reduce density. Number two, to incentivize desired commercial growth. I, I, I think it's a, I mean, we live in a free market enter, uh, uh, system. And so there are some ways that government, as Mr. Prentice has talked about, there are some ways that we can incentivize. there are some ways that we can incentivize, uh, the desired commercial growth that we feel best fits Hendersonville. Number three is I want to see a plan that can promote infrastructure investments. And when I say infrastructure, I mean road improvements. And a perfect example is Sanders Ferry Road. And then the last is I want a plan that will retain land for potential industrial growth. I don't wanna see any attempt to eliminate, uh, industrial land because I do believe that if we have that land, that as the Music City Studios grow, I believe that, that it's important for us to have potential land that businesses, industrial uses can use that to bring more jobs to Hendersonville. So, let me just touch on a couple of points as you, as you have, in the, in the, in the graph that you've got, I've tried to show, um, the underwater current regulations, under what is Westlake Plan allowances, and then under the alternative that I would respectfully request that you consider. Number, there, there's several things that my plan does, the alternate plan. One, it reduces the maximum potential multifamily high-density units seventy-eight percent from the current zoning regulations. It reduces seventy-eight percent of multifamily high-density units. Number two, it reduces dockside you, density from five per acre to four per acre. You, you, you heard earlier that, that it used to be fifteen an acre and BOMA changed it to five. I am proposing to, for you to consider to change it even more and reduce it to four per acre. Number three, it reduces high-density multifamily units sixty-five percent from the Westlake Plan. Or in other words, the Westlake Plan has the potential high-density of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven and what I'm, uh, proposing reduces that down to six hundred and one. Next, it, uh, it retains the current industrial zoning designation for Free Hill Road. And, uh, all of you know where Free Hill Road, that's the road across from the, uh, Fire Hall. That's the road on, up further that, uh, Music City Studios is gonna build. We don't need to even have the potential of a mixed-use residential development for there, I wanna retain that. Uh, next is it eliminates three hundred and eighty-one multifamily units on Sanders Ferry Road. And finally, uh, and this may not be something that for this board to consider, but maybe you could discuss it and, and bring some ideas to BOMA is I do, I, I do, I would like for us, as Mr. Prentice said, to study the, the, the possibility of a tax incremental financing. It's called a TIF for Sanders Ferry Road to spur road improvements. Now what that would mean is that if a, if a developer wanted to come and develop that for commercial purposes, of course, BOMA and this planning commission would have to approve it, but part of that would be to improve Sanders Ferry Road. So, it, it has to be kit and kittle, it has to, it has to, and I think match. So, you know, additional details are outlined that you have in front of you, Commissioners, of my proposal and the summaries, uh, for your, uh, consideration. My plan is not perfect, but I think it's a good starting point for your discussions. Again, the consultant worked hard and they came up with a plan, an urban plan that, for us to consider. Now it's in your ball court to modify that plan, to make the changes that are necessary. And I encourage you to go over it with a fine-tooth comb, comb, consider what I'm proposing and, uh, either adopt those or to come up with your own that will make this plan acceptable, uh, for the citizens and that will benefit us in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Roberson. Last, uh, speaker number eight is Chris Ratigan, would you step to the podium, please?
Good evening, Commission. Alderman in-house and Alderman up top on the bench there. It's gonna be tough to follow the last three speakers we had, so I'm gonna try to-
Do you mind stating your name and address?
My name is Chris Ratigan and I live at four 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 Sanders Ferry Road. The road, it's been brought up quite a bit tonight. I'm not gonna be that smooth, I'm trying to jump around and not cover the same things multiple times. Some of these ideas that have been stated are good ideas. Uh, one is not on the map, one is what the gentleman on the end said, which was keep it one story down where Lancoya is and all along Sanders Ferry, along the Drake's Creek area, we do not need to have multiple stories. Because if we wanna have high stories, we don't need to have a lake you can't see. It kinda defeats the purpose of being the city by the lake, which is what was the appealing part of a lot of people moving here from out of state that enjoy the fruits of what Hendersonville has to offer. If you have all these corridors of buildings, it's kinda like living in New York, like was mentioned, or in Fort Lauderdale or Daytona Beach. Um, our infrastructure is antiquated, we already know the roads can't handle what we have. We have water main breaks a lot because there's a lot more water usage and pressure with all the extra construction that's going on around. We had blackouts during sub-zero temperatures in the holidays, I'm sure you couldn't get your turkeys fixed. If the sewer pump on the corner by my house goes down, I have three feet of sewage shooting this high up onto my yard of my neighbor's yard that comes out of the sewer, uh, cap, the, the manhole cover. If they have a, they have a backup, if it doesn't come on, that leaves a mess. What's light along in between the property line but a stormwater utility drainage ditch that goes to the lake that's one hundred feet across the street? I don't think that's environmentally safe, but the idea of having all these extra development going on, how, what's the environmental impact on that? I think we should have plans for rebuilding all utilities in the city before we think about putting another stick of wood into the ground to make another building. I know some of the maps been changed, it was shown as fifteen units per acre, although everything was changed to five. I'm actually kind of more happy with, uh, Alderman Roberson's version of four units per acre. And there shouldn't be any hotels or mixed high-use, high-rises along Sanders Ferry. And if we create an extension of Madison of nothing but buildings, when you've been, if anybody's been down near Bed Bath and Beyond and you look across the street, all you see are high-rise apartments all along the Madison side, we don't need that coming to Hendersonville. When I moved to Hendersonville twenty-one years ago from New York, I was, been in the music business my whole life, and I was asked, why did you move to quote-unquote, snooty Hendersonville? Well, I moved to Hendersonville because I had friends here that I knew from the nineties, but it had the features of a big city in a small city feel. You didn't have to drive an hour and a half to go to the store to get yourself milk or bread. You had people that were close, close enough by, but they weren't sitting on top of you. You didn't reach your hand out the window with a roll of toilet paper to your neighbor in a skinny house. You had amendments that were popular in larger cities, but like I said, it was a smaller home feel. That's what a lot of us that moved and didn't wanna change anything did. Come here, build a life, build a house. Don't destroy everything to build a house, get a lot or buy an existing house. That's what eventually happened at home in New York. Like I said, I'm gonna jump around a little. You had the city that moves out, which is just development all around the country, probably even the world. So you're gonna have the city that moves out to suburbia that turns, that takes over more country, makes it urban to suburb, country goes away. They start acquiring property as you need, you push development further out. It's called, it's labeled as progress, it's not progress, it's taking away the quality of life from where people live and what people wanna grow and have a future with, with their children, and so on and so forth. Now you have New York City that's stretched past fifty miles past that original line, just past Queens, which is what that looks like. That doesn't look like Madison, that looks like Queens or Bayside. You have the water, you wanna have hotels and high-rise apartments and all this. Anyhow. I don't wanna relive this after being here for twenty-one years and neither do the residents that have lived through their entire life. We need to have stricter zoning laws that they were finally put in place at home. I'm from Long Island, just past Queens. It turned into the fact of if you cannot, you're only allowed to build in that space. You buy the land, you buy the house, that's all you can build on, but they changed zoning where you could go so far, as far as footprint. We need to start thinking about that before we no longer have any footprints to make. That's what's going on. All these skinny homes, you're taking five acres, you're putting twenty-five of them on. Like the acreage jet down at the end of Sanders Ferry Road on the turn of Curtis Crossroads. If anybody lives over there, I don't know where all of you guys live and girls, but there's multiple accidents that happen on that curve every year. I live just before that, across from the Marina, it's ninety-degree turn, it's great on motorcycle, can have a grand old time. As long as the guy coming the other way from the Walton Ferry side is, uh, in his lane. But multiple, those two houses over there have had their driveways and their mailboxes destroyed. There's always an accident, that's a bad idea to add twelve homes, I know that has nothing to do with this. So I just wanted to bring that up because the road can't handle that. Sanders Ferry Road has got a problem with the Corps of Engineers and the lake. We discussed this with multiple construction projects on the street as, as, as it already was. Um, we talked about surveys, someone spoke about surveys, I got an idea for a survey. If anybody wants to really take a look at what goes on, on this side of town, who may or may not live there, or may not even live in the state, I do not know. But, if you wanna know what it's like, how about we all trade houses in our commutes for a week? And everybody could see what we have to deal with, living on the Sanders Ferry and Walton Ferry Peninsula versus others that may live closer to Indian Lake or beyond. I don't wanna take up any more time, as we know about the power outage and the power lines down on Conference Road Drive for a whole weekend, that messed up everything on three eighty-six. There's been three accidents in three months on the bridge bite that goes over Hooters and, uh, everything over there in Rivergate. That's backed up the road for hours in the morning. I've sat in it, anybody else? The tornado destroyed the peninsulas, the hurricane winds last week, all the roads closed, all the power lines down, people still don't have power. God forbid, there's a flooding event, a flooding event, a dam break upstream. Or we even have some sort of train derailment, because that's the current thing in the news, and we do have a rail system that goes right through Hendersonville, we know all about that lovely intersection by Saundersville. So if we jam thousands of people into more structures, more cars and people is a bad idea. So I'm just gonna close, because I know I covered a lot of the same stuff everybody else did, and I apologize. But once everything's gone, folks, it's gone, you're not gonna get it back. You can't just mow down a building because no one's gonna let you. If you wanna live like it is in other states, find a place to live or stay there. Don't come here. You don't have to have all this little extra special stuff you left that you didn't like there, but you want here because you can't walk across the street and go get your cup of coffee that's overpriced. Don't change the city by the lake. Just another plan to remove the charm is what this is looking like, just like the multiple ones we've fought over the last few years, and it's kinda getting old for all of us to keep boring you guys, saying, no, we don't want any more building going on over there. We have a uniqueness here, uniqueness here, and that's what we wanna keep. We don't need Cookie Cutter Franklin, Brentwood, California, Chicago, or even New York City, we don't want it. I'd like a couple of more pizza places, but New York pie is great, so Sanders Ferry pizza, but anyway. We don't need the influx of undesirables or any kind of more criminal element because we've already had an increase in crime, which has been mentioned. Thank you for your time, everybody have a great night. Thank you for letting me speak.
As I mentioned from the outset, this is the public's chance to give feedback tonight. Now as we get into things, it'll be planning commissioners that'll be deliberating stuff. So if somebody wanted to speak that did not sign up, raise your hand and we'll recognize you, yes, sir?
Good evening.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, absolutely, good evening first, thank you, uh, each one of y'all for your hard work. My name is David Butler and I live at one forty-five Cages Road. I am a fifth, fourth generation Hendersonville resident. I now have six generations of Hendersonville residents. And I didn't come up here to tell this long sad story or anything like that, but I remember when the lake was formed. Brother, I also remember wherever you're at, Mallard Point, uh, we used to picnic there. When my wife and I decided to build a house next door to a house that I've owned for two decades, my parents' house. I was always out here every weekend. One of my, uh, great friends was Jack Smith, um, a deceased Alderman, probably nobody in here remembers him. Do you? Great guy. But when I was a, a young, a child, of course, wasn't all this development, I remember as, as we grew, uh, the lake, the creek kinda become like a, down there by, uh, Lancoya, rest, it was a swamp. Some of y'all don't remember. But I go back to when Hendersonville was a cow town, three thousand people here when I was born. So, I've seen it, I've been out here. The lake began to, the creek filled up. Nothing was done. And I reminded the Alderman, this is what this city's built around. And people, that creek, Drake's Creek, is what this city's built around. Not out in the middle of the lake. Certainly a lot of boats there at, uh, two-foot and so forth. But Drake's Creek is what this lake was built on. They dredged it, y'all dredged it, put the GO things that, uh, you know, has the walkways and all that stuff. And you could see already the people that wanted to come here. When my wife and I moved back here four years ago, the first thing I told her, I said, you've gotta learn how to drive like these people. Because most of the people that drive out here like, or everywhere, are not from here. So where they're, they're used to driving, and so I've had to tell her. Now I live on Cages Road. And, uh, that's where I was born and raised. My grandmother graduated high school there. My great-grandfather was a custodian bus driver, my mother and father graduated from Hendersonville. I graduated, my whole family, nephews included. And when we moved back, I told my wife, because she's not, she doesn't drive like that. I said, you've got to learn how to drive out here, you'll get killed. Saunders Ferry Road. When I see that walkway that's getting built and I see that guardrail right there, I'm thinking, that's gonna stop somebody, they're gonna be looking over there at somebody walking, and all of a sudden, they're gonna be all, if, I mean, I know they're gonna improve it, but good lord. And my concern is Old Shackle and Walton Ferry. I, I, I don't know what your plan is, I came tonight, I, I studied this, couldn't make heads or tail because I, I'm not that smart. But I, I haven't heard anything about that intersection, that's a very dangerous intersection. People run that red light all the time, doing fifty, sixty miles an hour, you better look before you pull out. So, I'm, I'm challenging, asking you, if somebody can explain to me later, whatever, because I've only been here four years, so I haven't studied a whole lot about who to talk to, and I know a lot of people here. And, and then finally, I, I'm not sure what you're talking about with this Cages Road thing. Everybody I talk to says, you talking about Cages Bend? No, I live in the poor section. Somebody, they go, where's that at, didn't know Hendersonville had one? Well, well, when we built our house in fifty-six, I was born in fifty-four, it was the poor section. I remember Walton Ferry was a dirt road. I remember Smith spoke dock. Remember a lot about Hendersonville, not trying to go back fif- fifty years. I love the progress. I moved back here for a reason. My wife is two minutes from Kroger. She, we love it out here, but it's dangerous. And that intersection right there, it, and I, and I wish somebody explained to me how Cages Road, the oldest road, one of the oldest roads in Hendersonville, fits into this plan. I don't understand that part. Thank you very much for your time. Didn't intend to speak, I'm shy, as you can tell. But thank you for your hard work and God bless you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jeff Sassy, one oh-six Villaway. And thank you for this plan. I mean, what I've seen from this plan is an attempt, a first attempt at improving what we currently have established in our city. And when I, when I first looked at this, I was this, you know, I really dug into it deep to discover exactly what it was trying to accomplish. And I see what it's trying to accomplish. I applaud you on that. But I want, I want to say it doesn't go far enough. Our citizens deserve a place that's not developer-friendly, but that's family-friendly. And right now, assigning these areas to a model that, I understand it's not developer-created, but let's face it, it is developer-friendly, because it is, it is dedicating areas to high-density, to high-rise. I'll tell you, I talked to a lot of citizens. I've never once had someone come up to me like, you know this lot right here? It would look great with an apartment complex. You know, you have three stories? That would be wonderful. And I look at the Saunders Ferry, you know, I love going to Lancoya, who doesn't, right? And I see on the plan that that's now being replaced with a high-density residential. That, I don't think anyone wants that. So I just want to challenge you. This is the first plan, but that doesn't mean it needs to be the last one. I'm a businessman. When I'm, when I'm thinking of doing something, I don't just go with my first thought and run with it, right? I'm going to get other people's opinions. I'm going to go through several iterations and really perfect it before I execute. And I encourage you to do the same. I know the aldermen talked to a lot of citizens. I am sure you guys have gotten a lot of flack, you've gotten a lot of comments. But the first person that they usually go to is their alderman, because they're the face of their ward. So I encourage you, if, if you let, to work on the next iteration, sit down with the alderman, if you need to, and, and listen to some of the other comments that they're getting, because I'm sure they're getting a lot on this. So that's all I had to say. I'm excited to see this move forward, but it needs to get even better than what it is. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the extra opportunity to speak. My name is Kaye Brooks. I live at one twenty-three Trousdale Drive. That would be the Indian Lake Peninsula. God was gracious enough to get me here before the prices started going crazy. I bought the cheapest house on the block, and I have loved being there. But having come from Inglewood, I understand what can happen. And I so value West Main. What I see are a lot of small businesses, families just trying to keep hearth and home together, doing something that they're passionate about. They found a niche, they want to do that. And I, I mean, I agree, we could use a little refreshing over there. But, and I hope we can find a way to incentivize those people. It makes me really nervous when people say, well, the land is worth more than the building. No, 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 no. That's a lifestyle, and that is worth so much more than both of them together. And we need those in Hendersonville. And so, you know, we don't need more people, as it's already been said. Plenty of people are coming here. We have to figure out how to get more jobs here, not more roofs. And so I got up specifically to say, I'm for you. I am for West Lake, West Main. I am not for West Lake. This is a developer's dream. You guys get up every morning trying to plan a city, and we're going, wait, we like the city we have. And you get paid to change it. We don't want that. So I just wanted to get up and say, I'm for you. Thank you for showing up. If you need something, holler, because I'll be here.
Lauren, I believe you had some comments.
Thank you, Chairman. We received one public comment from Gina Mansfield via email for this hearing, as well as provided public petition from Beth Holloway, both of which were provided to the commissioners before the meeting in your emails. All of the comments expressed concern about West Lake. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to suspend the public hearing from now. We'll move in, as I mentioned from the outset, we're not going to make any final decision on anything tonight. So what this will do is allow that to carry over to next month, when we deliberate again on it. But we will get into presentation on that now. And, give me just a second, I'm a little overloaded with paperwork, so let me find. With that, as we're going back to this, Grant, I'm just going to let you just speak to this real quick. You've already covered a lot of things, just kind of kick off our discussion here.
Are we, the West Lake Plan?
Yes.
Yes, we mentioned the agenda, go on and move that up. Okay, great. Yeah, this is, this is not really. This, this plan is, we've looked at this, and, you know, there's a lot of proposals that we put forward and reconsidered a lot of things. And really, you know, this is a citizen-driven plan. What we're hoping to do with this is take these comments that you all have had and incorporate that into the plan. Or, you know, there's always the option of, you know, denying the plan. Or, you know, there's different, there's different options. I think we want to try to take into account what the, what the citizens want, for sure. And just, there's been several things. I guess, do you have the map, Lauren? Would you be able to pull that up?
Grant, I'm going to let Director Free just kind of walk through section by section.
Okay, yeah, that'd be a good deal. Thank you.
Awesome. And just so you're aware, consultant, would you mind just kind of hanging around the podium in case we have some questions for you as well? Thank you. I won't make you stand up the whole time, I just got to have you ready, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to pull this, can everybody hear me okay? I'll try to, I'll try to go a little closer here to it. I think commissioners, what might be the best way to do this is kind of look at each piece. And kind of like what I would, what I would like to do is to go through each piece and maybe go ahead and reconcile, is that, is that a part of the plan that we want to keep? Do we want to amend it? Do we want to change it in any way? And then maybe get a general consensus on that particular area, and then move on to the next, to the next one. The first area that I would like to start is on Dockside, Focus Area C. That's the area up there in orange, and that's right there on the lake. And I think, I think this is, this is one that has been the most contentious. And, you know, has really had a lot of the different questions about the potential for more high-density development there on Saundersville Road. And then there was a question about hotels. Currently, currently with the existing Old Town Commercial zoning, multifamily is allowed on second floor and above, if you've got commercial on the first floor. And hotels are allowed currently. The, the plan was looking to reduce that, that Old Town Commercial area, and then just kind of put it into, into that, and allow mixed-use development with a maximum of four stories. And then looking at the changes, I think some of the things that we need to look at is we need to look at the uses. I think hotels have been an issue. About, even though they're allowed right now, it's just a question about hotels and those types of intense uses. And then also, if there were residential units there, what that density would be, maybe different than fifteen units an acre. I think, you know, as we, we enter this discussion about this, you know, I think one of the issues is the condition and the width of Saunders, Sanders Ferry, Sanders Ferry Road. It does limit currently, you know, I think the potential for more intense development on that specific location. Until there is a specific plan, you know, the plan that we, we're looking at, it's not a transportation plan, but it did, it did recognize some improvements needed to happen for traffic flow on the corner of Sanders Ferry and West Main Street with turning lanes and things like that. But the issue with Sanders Ferry is deeper than the intersection. It goes to what the gentleman mentioned earlier, which we've all heard, and we've all driven the road. Is the narrowness of the core property, and when you go over that little bridge, and it's just, it's scary. And putting, putting more intense development opposed here, you know, is definitely, you know, problematic. And, and as we, as we've said, one of the things, as we go through all of these different individual items, and we discuss those, and kind of come up, and the commission kind of comes up with a consensus on maybe how the staff and the consultant can make some changes before the next meeting. This is the area that I wanted to, I wanted to start with. And it's something where it's, it's challenging, because it's the one place where the entire community is, gosh, couldn't there be something better there? Although there's good stuff there now, it's just, that's, that's one of the questions, I think, that, you know, that arise. But then in looking at it, this is a way to address that. But there's not a plan, a direct plan, for this underdeveloped Saundersville Road at this, at this time. There's certainly a need for that. But, and that may be something in the future where we might have a plan for that road. But at this point, we don't. You know, that's not, you know, one of our main things. So I guess let's, let's start that discussion about, and Chairman, if you can kind of lead that, that, about, do we want to have residential there? If we do, fifteen units an acre, or what density? Are there any commercial uses, just in general, that we would not want to have there? And we don't have to get too crazy specific. Hotels, maybe we can talk about that, because the more specific things would be done in a future rezoning, which isn't a part of this, but that's when we get really down in the weeds, weeds with it. But.
And Director, before opening up the commissioners' questions and comments, I'd just like a little clarity on, we've talked about this, this is not a rezone right here. What this does is kind of laid the groundwork for what a rezone might be in the future. Is that, is my understanding correct on that?
That's correct. It lays the groundwork where, where like, the best way that I can describe it is right now, in this particular area that we're focusing on right now, you have the Old Town Plan, and then all the zoning, the Old Town Commercial, the Old Town Residential, all of that rests on that plan. And that's what justifies the zoning, is, is this Old Town Plan. And to change what's currently there in the zoning, you have to have a pretty well-thought-out plan to replace the Old Town Plan with, for example, the West Lake Plan, if you're going to change, going to then potentially allow changes to the zoning, the zoning on that property. That zoning on that property, that, that if we, if we approved a future land use plan for this specific area, since we're focusing on that right now, then a property owner could come in for a zone change, and it would be supported by the framework, future land use plan of the West Lake. Or the city, and this is very highly possible, is the city, once this plan is approved, in some of these areas, the city may initiate and undertake rezoning of these areas, so that it can facilitate whatever the plan would be. For example, some of the things that the planning staff and the planning commission, and I think residents in the peninsula don't like about the Old Town zoning, and Old Town Residential and Old Town Commercial are some of the density implications. And we've all seen those happen over the last couple of years, and we're not really crazy about it. And that has led to where we're at tonight. But in order to change those things through either rezoning, coming up with new zoning to replace the old zoning, and then also in some areas might be text amendments on existing zoning classifications that would alter what is actually allowed within some of these areas, that would be then supported by the West, by the West Lake Future Land Use Plan. Does that kind of address what you're talking about, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Thank you, Director Free. Questions, comments from commissioners? Sir, what he just explained is just what the plan that was presented to us tonight is outlined on that. We're now going to get into that. And your question was respectful, and I appreciate that. But now this is, this is time for planning commissioners to talk on that. So I just, but Commissioner Evans, I believe you were led up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nobody out here lives further out on the peninsula than I do. I live, I live further than Sterling Drive. Moved into Hendersonville. First of all, let me say, I feel like I've been indicted before I've ever done anything wrong. This is the first time we've considered this plan. This is a plan, planner's plan. That's what we're trying to do. Now, we're hearing from everybody. I haven't said anything about this plan yet, but I've been listening. I've been watching Neighborhood Network and whoever Marty is. Thank you, Marty, for really understanding what the plan does so far. I don't know if Marty's here, don't even know Marty. But a lot of people had a lot of bad information on this, and started out in a very wrong way in trying to indict the people that might have a plan and might be trying to do something good before you ever came to listen to it. So, so please, give us some opportunity to do what we need to do. I come down Sanders Ferry Road every day, have been now for about fourteen years. Before that, I lived over on the Indian Lake Peninsula. I've lived here thirty years. And when I moved here, thirty, actually thirty-one and a half years ago, Hendersonville was a small town of twenty-five thousand. And now, I believe it's what, sixty-seven thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood? And I would love for the town to be just like it was when I moved here. That's why I moved here. I love the town, the way it was then. But we're not going to stop growth here. We're not going to change that. Everybody else likes this town, too. And we like it because everybody else likes it. So how do we manage what we've got going? Now, planners and consultants for planners come up with ideas to try to encourage things to happen the way you feel like they ought to happen. That's why there's mixed-use in with this plan. That's why there's, there are some other things. The plan as it exists, if you oppose the plan, you oppose one step in the right direction. The plan as it exists, that actually reduces the high-density. It already does that. So if you say, let's leave it alone, and let's not do anything, you've actually encouraged more high-density than is in this plan as it exists. Now, we can do better than that. Let's take this plan at this point, and I've written emails to this body here and the Board of Mayor and Alderman before I ever got involved. And one of the ideas, not an idea, it was a statement, that we can do before we do anything else, we do not have any obligation to change industrial or commercial property to residential. I believe we have enough people, but we need something for the people to get what they need in Hendersonville instead of hitting the bypass every day to go to Nashville. I believe that, that there's room in this area to build some things, to improve what's there for the citizens that are already here without adding more citizens. So having said all of that, my suggestion, my hope, and my amendment, if we get to that point tonight, would be to first of all, not suggest that we rezone anything that's, that is now industrial or residential, or industrial or commercial, into residential. And beyond that, I would like to point out that there's really nothing here that does anything for traffic. We might have some plans, we might have something that, that might happen in the future, but having waited thirty years for the, the Old Shackle Island realignment, I don't see anything happening there for a long time. So the plan, however, is to try to encourage development and to try to encourage people to do what they ought to do anyway, and that is clean up their buildings, make that end of town look better. The people that, that live there can attract a lot of these people that we have here now, if they would simply spend some money on it and try to improve their businesses and get more people to come in. So I'm, I'm sitting here, I've been where you are, and I've, I share every comment that I've heard tonight. tonight, except the one that we need more people. I don't know where this market stuff came from, how many new units we need. I guess we could probably put in a million new ones and attract a lot of people because our city's that good. One of our old city managers years ago, he said, when you, people think when you move to Hendersonville, we ought to close the gate and not let anybody else in. Well, that's kind of the way we are. We like our town the way it is. We don't like to see changes. We don't like anybody to invade our culture, but we're not going to stop the growth. The point of what we're trying to do here is to try to plan for the way the growth needs to go. So that's what we're doing. We're not trying to shove anything down anybody's throat. So having said all of that, my suggestion is that we not change anything industrial or commercial to residential. And I can put that in a more formal way at some point, whenever it's appropriate.
Commissioner Evans, I think the way that we're going to approach things tonight is just take these comments and then we won't take a motion or anything, but Commissioner Martin, before I recognize you, we had a request for a bio break on that, so if we can take a little five-minute recess, we'll come back and do this, let folks kind of step to the restroom or do whatever they need to do on that. But we'll be back in about five minutes.
We want to put more traffic over there, but we're not going to fix any roads, but I'm not going to fix any.
Folks, about forty-five seconds and we'll get started again. Folks, we'll go on and get started again. I hope everybody had a chance to use the facilities, have a nice little break, and we'll get started again. I believe Alderman Martin, you were waiting in the queue to speak. Not to put you on the spot, if you know.
Yeah, so I appreciate Commissioner Evans' comments. Looking at the emails and correspondence that I've received, I don't feel like people are being critical towards the Planning Commission in particular. What I feel like, there is frustration, and I think that frustration deals with a very small piece of Westlake. In fact, it's actually on the screen, Dockside is that Section C, which is very, it's such a small piece of the whole Westlake plan. So, the Dockside, which, who all here is here to talk about the Dockside? Okay, so, most of the people that are here that have spoken have been talking about the Dockside. Nobody's really talked about Midway, or the Anchor West, or the other properties. And, so I want to focus on C, and Keith Free started to kind of bring it up, and I think he's cognizant that that is an area that we need to talk about. So, one of the presenters was talking about luxury hotels, and I understand that it's allowed now. So, what I'd like to propose, we've got snacks, is if we can take it off. I know it's allowed today, and from what I've heard today, and at Gene Brown is that it's not wanted. So, that's one thing I'd like to do, is to see if we can, you know, remove that building type altogether. The other thing that I'd like to see, or I'd like to propose, based on what we've heard tonight, and what we've heard at Gene Brown, is to reduce the density in that Section Number C. You guys did the historic kind of preservation for the homes, for, like, the ones on Chival Drive, which we're very, very appreciative and thankful for what you guys have done. When you took it from fifteen to five, that gave us the relief that we needed, and I guess I'm speaking to all the Commissioners, because you guys all came in and helped us. And so, what I hear is kind of that area wanting the same type of help. And so, I don't know if we can also do that for C, not take it down to one, but take it from fifteen down to five. And if a developer comes along and has a project that they want to propose that is above that, if it's something that gives a value to Hendersonville, if it's something that we want, then we can grant a zoning request to accommodate that. And I think that's happened before. Grace Place, you know, they asked for zoning, they had a great facility that they wanted to do, a great service, and we granted that. So, I'd like to see if that might be an option.
I'd kind of like to, along the same lines as what Commissioner Martin was breaking, he didn't say this, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just kind of got the thought process rolling on that. Is there, we've talked about all these being mixed use, of course, and this is a question for the Director as much as his comment. We've talked about all these being mixed use, and we're focusing on the density of that. Is there a way for us to require a certain amount of retail along with that, too? I mean, beyond just first floor retail, and then whatever, then after that, can we say like, hey, we want it to be, and I'm just making up numbers, I don't know, but we want it to be seventy-five percent retail and twenty-five percent. Is that even viable? Is that something that we can?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think that's very viable. And it could be something where you said, hey, you can do a mixed use development and have those percentages in there. That can be in the plan, then that can drill down to the rezoning in the future, that would have some of those different criteria, as well as looking at those uses of maybe eliminating hotels from that, you know, from that specific area. So, that's, no, that's very, no, that's very possible to put that in there for the percentages. And then, the whole thing with this specific area, and it's that area C, can everybody see that area, the orange C area right there? So, what the plan has in that area is mixed use, but it could only do mixed use if it only, you know, what we were looking at is only if you could put together two or three acres. And it met all these requirements, and one of those could be that it's seventy-five percent commercial retailer office, and it could only be twenty-five percent. So, we could definitely do that. So, basically, this area is going to act just like that yellow area on Main Street, that's the community, I think, community retail. It's going to act just like that, except for, oh, if you're wanting to do a mixed use, then you could do it possibly, if you meet these different criteria. And one of them is the size, so you couldn't do it on a little half acre lot or something. You'd have to acquire, you know, some property, and then we could set what that criteria is. So, that's very possible to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Director. One reason I was kind of thinking that is because, try to always kind of work through what-if scenarios on that. And I understand where everybody's kind of coming from, focusing on the number of units per acre on that, but a unit is not necessarily, not all units are equal. I mean, some could be one bedrooms, some could be three bedrooms on that. This is why, I was just wondering if that was even a possible way to kind of address that. Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the same lines, focusing on C, still in my comments, personally, I'm not excited about the maximum four stories that are outlined there. In thinking about driving into our city, and coming through the current western side of our city, that is the first glimpse of water, that is the first glimpse of the park complex, which I think are very, very positive features for our city, and look really good as you're coming in, most especially the first look at the city, if you're in the city on the lake. So, the thought of four stories being allowable there is not ideal in my mind. I would like to see that reduced to, I mean, I'd prefer no more than two stories, but one, but I definitely think four stories is too much of a block.
And I'm going to try to monopolize the conversation here at all, but, thank you, Commissioner. But, is there any reason why we can't divide up C, too? I mean, because if you look at it, I mean, it's obviously, you've got Sanders Ferry Road running, I started to say Saunders Ferry, it's always been Saunders Ferry to me, so if I call it Saunders Ferry, just bear with me. So, but, exactly, that's right. But, why can't we just, why did they have to be looked at as one right there? Why could we not necessarily divide it up between like the lake side of it, and then the other side? And just, because I agree with kind of comments that are mentioned, one-story, two-story stops, especially on the lake, but you might have a little bit more flexibility in part of C that's already commercial, than for instance, maybe allowing for multiple stories. Do we have to look at this as?
No.
Okay.
And this is, the boundaries of this, I mean, it can all, it can all change. That could be broken, if you can follow that along the road, and yeah. So, you could divide that where, to the right side of that black line that's Sanders Ferry, that could be something where it's limited to one or two stories. And then, over on the other part, it could maybe be two or three, you know, whatever, whatever the Commission would want to do. But, it could be, it could be broken easily into that. So, and that would not be, that would not be unreasonable to do that. The Old Town Plan does that right now. So, it breaks down the proximity to the water with the number of stories and the height of the building. So, it does that already. But, we could definitely do that. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the consultant one question, too. Just, I'd like to know kind of the thought process between, I see it on one end, but I want to know kind of the rest of it. Obviously, you wanted to get some of the density off the peninsula, and kind of shove it up toward the front. What made this area where you wanted to, where you wanted to concentrate residential density, then, what was your thought process behind that?
Here we go. Well, I think the primary objective is what you said, is we wanted to move the density off the peninsula, and when you look in this area, that location made the most sense to sort of focus that development. Very valid point about the development on the, I guess, is that the north side, there by the lake. That's a very valid point. And as Keith said, we can absolutely, you know, bifurcate that, and, you know, and make that a different area from the rest of C, for sure. To preserve some of the view sheds that are there, I mean, yeah, that's a valid observation. So, we can certainly do that.
Sorry. Last question I kind of have for you, and just kind of, is, was there, when you all put it together, was there any, was there any thought of even viability for this? I mean, because we've talked about, you know, and the consensus is obviously not to have there, but when the land use would allow for a four-story hotel, was there even any consideration if it would be supported? I mean, literally supported, with the ground supported, and that sort of thing?
Well, I mean, and again, this is not, this is not a rezoning, this is just simply, you know, a land use plan. And I think the hotel was a suggestion for one use that would take place there. I think any developer worth their salt would do a pro forma and a market analysis to determine if that's actually viable or not. And if a developer determines that a hotel isn't viable there, and some other use is, the plan would allow for that.
But, point being, y'all didn't get into that.
Right. It doesn't lock you in, per se, to a hotel. It gives you flexibility, that's just one idea.
Okay. Thank you.
But, I, you know, as Director Free mentioned, if we don't think the idea of a hotel there at all is desirable, then that's something that we can reconsider as well.
And like I said, I think that's kind of the consensus here, like, but I was just trying to...
You think? Yeah.
I just wanted to kind of get an idea of y'all's thought process and background on that. I mean, because even beyond market viability and interest in community, I'm just not sure that there's the ground there to support that type of structure on that. So, I just wanted to see if y'all kind of, if that was even part of your...
No, we didn't get to the engineering level. And we did, you know, obviously, respect the flood plain and things like that. So, it's, so none of what you see is in the flood plain, of course. But, yeah.
Beyond that?
Yeah, beyond that, no.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments from Commissioners?
Let me summarize.
Director Free?
Yeah, I guess I can summarize what we have so far. And then, this one probably is going to take the most discussion that we've already had. The rest of them, I think it'll go fairly, might go fairly quickly. So, what I have so far is with the changes, is to take out the opportunity for hotels within that whole C-orange area. Take the unit count, the maximum unit count, down from fifteen units an acre to five units an acre. Still giving an opportunity for some, you know, moderate density there. Also, looking to, on any mixed use development within that area, that would be incorporate residential, to limit that to twenty-five percent of a total project. And then also, to break that area down the road, and on the lake side, one story or two stories? One, with, one on the lake side, and then on the other side, a maximum of two stories. And so, that's what, that's what I have so far, if there's a general consensus to make those changes. And when we're talking about this for the folks in the audience, so these are changes that the staff will work with the consultant, and will make on the plan, and then get that back out for public consumption, and for the Planning Commission, to come back in April. And this is just one area, we have seven more to go over. So, is that?
Commissioner Harwood?
The, I like the idea of breaking the two, the lake side versus the other side, and in reducing the density on housing, but we are still leading it to where it can be office condos, that type, because there's already that, the type of office condos back there, that are two-story. And then, I would say, on having it, whether, if you want to have it to where there's residential on top, and an office condo, by definition, it needs to be fifty-fifty, because if you have ten thousand square feet on the first floor, then you're going to have ten thousand square feet on the second floor. So, it really needs to be fifty-fifty, if you're going to do that.
If that's the way that it has to be to keep the building falling over, I think we could...
The reduction in units an acre will limit the density, I mean, it's going to significantly limit that, but you're right.
If you know that the gas station's already being redone, we know there's already office condos back there that are very nice, they stay full, you have the dentist office that's there, so you've got room for that office condo market to move back down this direction, and would be a great product that, at some point, a local developer's going to want to do.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners on the Dockside portion? It's the way Director Free recommended we go about this, is we approach them each in three sections on this. So, anything else on Dockside that we want to add in on that?
We, since we're there in Dockside, that was for the Dockside Area C, I guess we could just go ahead and hit those other Dockside areas. So, Dockside, Main Street focus area D, that pink area, that she's moving the cursor around, that's where the Holder Fund Center, and then some property east of it. There's a mix of different things, and it backs up to the railroad track. That's an area where the plan is proposing mixed use development, where you would have fifteen units an acre. And so, just some discussion about the uses, the residential density there. I will say, this is one area with the Holder Fund Center, that it was something where it was more about the existing building and uses. It's such a big building, it has the potential with, like such a big building does, and it's older, to where it kind of struggles, it could struggle along for years, where you just have, you know, it's maybe half-full, or, you know, has, you know, has a lot of different tenants coming and going, that really doesn't take off. And it's, you know, buildings like that, that are different than some of the other buildings we have in that area, because it's just, it's difficult to financially really bring it up, because it's so, it's so large. So, that is an area where it was less about just having a nice signature project there, and it was really more looking at what the future could be for that site. But, that's kind of where we were coming from, you know, on that particular one, at that D pink area. No, we're going to talk about that, though. Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not there. It's not a focus area, but we're going to, we're going to talk about that in just a, in just a minute. But, this is on that D area that's the pink area. So, any, any direction on that? With what John was saying earlier, this is currently zoned, just straight commercial. So, this would be a property that would, you know, potentially be taken, eventually could be taken out of commercial. One alternative, just to get creative, that we could do, is just designate, you know, the area we're going to get to on Free Hill, where the Alderman talked about, that's industrial, and we had potential planned development area. We could say that on this, where it's not a focus area, where it would be by right, but we might say, hey, this would be an area we'd entertain a planned development in the future. And when we say entertain a planned development, that's really a rezoning, it would still have to go through the Planning Commission for recommendation, and ultimately to our elected officials at BOMA for the final decision on that, if that ever happened in the future.
So, are you saying on that, you would be like an office flex type? Because the retail use there, that building's coming down. It's just, it's just a matter of when the holders find somebody that'll pay them enough money.
Yeah, we envision that. There could be a small retail component to it, but we, yeah, but we see that as being really an office mixed use development, that would have residential and office uses in it. It's kind of what we envisioned for that. At the very front, there could be some outlets of straight commercial. Yeah. So, that's kind of what we were thinking about that, you know, that particular piece. And this doesn't include the Pizza Ranch property, yeah, it's in the front, so that would be something that would stay, that kind of, you know, that would be something that would fit into the future land use plan. Yeah.
Commissioner Slattery, I think you lit up first, so...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, did you say currently, the proposal would be a density of fifteen units per acre?
That's correct. The Westlake proposal is fifteen units an acre.
No, I would prefer to see that come down.
Okay.
Definitely. I can't, I can't think of any place along Main Street with direct access to Main Street where fifteen units per acre is manageable right now. So, I definitely would be in favor of bringing that down.
Do you think, do you think five units an acre, or ten units an acre?
Five.
Five? Okay.
That would be...
Well, it's zero now, right?
It's zero now.
Yeah, I'd rather it stay commercial, no residential.
Commercial, zero.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's, so that's very possible.
I mean, just, I can't envision somebody choosing their first place to live being behind the Pizza Ranch.
Yeah. So, that could be, do we, do we have a general consensus to just take that off, and just incorporate it as a part of that yellow area, where it would just be community retail?
I would be in favor. I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Is that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The next area that's within here is...
I want to reckon, Commissioner Martin's lit up, so I wanted to...
She hit it right on.
Okay. Okay. Before we jump too far ahead...
I'm going to buy her some pizza at Pizza Ranch.
Before we jump too far ahead, I want to just briefly go back to C for a moment on that. We had talked about the one story on the lake side of that. Do you know offhand how many stories are in those old, old apartments next to that old gas station?
It's at least two. It's two with a walkout basement, isn't it?
Yes.
I think. It's two.
Okay. That's what I was curious of, because I want, is there any way to force something like that? Because that place, I'm going to try to say this gently and diplomatically, that place needs a lot of work. And, but, if we go, if we go to one story right there, I'm afraid what they'll do is they'll hang on to it forever on that. And that's something, we don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face there on that. So, is there any, if there's, something's existing two-story that we can allow it to be replaced by a two-story?
It's, yeah, it's possible, because it would be non-conforming, be a non-conforming structure, and the laws are a little different about non-conforming structures. But, I believe, I'm looking at Sydney, I believe we've researched this on some other things, and I think you can actually take the whole building down and build it back, as long as it doesn't necessarily encompass a bigger area. So, that's possible.
Yeah, because, I mean...
Yeah, it's possible.
I'd obviously love for that to be one story right there, but along with everything else, but it's there, and I just know, kind of being a property owner, nobody's going to do anything with it on that, if they can't replace it and make the same thing. So, I just, I wanted to kind of ask about that.
And we can think that through a little bit more on how the nuance might be on the plan. So, we'll think about that.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To that end, one of the comments, one of the public comments earlier, I believe it was Mr. Prentice, mentioned the idea of looking at incentives and things that we could do to encourage a deferral of reappraisal of property, other things like that. So, specifically in situations like this, I would like to see us develop a list of possibilities that we could offer to current property owners, where we want to make changes or encourage changes to their property. And this would be, I think, a prime example of that.
Yes. And one of the things that we're hand-in-hand doing with this, once we have an approved plan, is the city's economic development activities are under the Planning Department now, and we would, we would pursue those things. So, that's one of the things, Westlake will become a very top priority for all those creative things that we could possibly do with economic development, to incentivize and to attract investment to that area.
Commissioner Martin?
C, what is it zoned for now, especially up towards Main Street?
On D?
No, C.
C, the orange area. It's zoned, all of that's...
Oh, it is orange right there.
Yeah, all that's zoned, I believe, right now, Old Town Commercial, which allows, basically, I could do an office, or I could do, I could actually, yeah, I could do a hotel on the first floor, and then the second and third floors, it could all just be multifamily. And so, that's what's existing right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't even think it has to be a luxury hotel, either.
No, it could be a motel. Yeah, and I might, I might, I might mention on the, just to address the thing on the luxury hotel, I mean, the chances of getting a luxury hotel there, I mean, it's possible. But, now, the difference is, right now, we just have hotel motels, there's no definition. Not just a definition, but it's, we all know there's a wide variety of those types of activities. And so, what we were looking to do is to restrict the number to maybe two, and then create a new category in our zoning, that would be luxury hotel, that would have a bunch of amenities, you know, it might have, have to have a restaurant in it, and other, other things that are typical, what something might meet the definition of hotel now, you know, would not have. So, it would have be hotels that had those amenities that just a typical hotel wouldn't have, and that's what that was. Oh, right. I didn't know that. Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Well, that's a little history, because I know they've been apartments since the late eighties, so that's, that's, okay. That makes sense. Okay. Director Free, do you want to kind of guide us through it?
So, the area right there, that the highlighter will show, that little cross-section area that's maroon or brown looking in the middle, so right now, that's the mixed-use neighborhood in Dockside. And so, it's right now at ten units an acre. And the idea for this is, you can't have multifamily, but you could have townhomes, you could have single-family house, and this is under the Westlake plan. Or you could have a restaurant, or you could have an office, or you could have a little boutique retail shop. So, there's a wide variety of things that we envision. It's a true mix, kind of mixed-use kind of, kind of area. But, the question here would be, is about the density and the uses. I guess really mainly the density, because this is, right now, with the proposal, is ten units an acre. And I think, I think on the proposal that Alderman, the Alderman had earlier, I think that was maybe looking to reduce that to, I'm not seeing that, I think, five units, five units an acre? maybe looking to reduce that to, uh, I'm not seeing that. I think five units, five units an acre within that. So, uh, you know, what we see this area is this tr- transition from the commercial stuff that's on Main Street, West Main Street, and then that blue area that's the preservation, preservation area. And, uh, and actually there might be a lot of interesting, uh, type of development that occur with that. I, I think that is something, we have it at 10 units an acre. I think it could re- reduce to five units an acre and still, still create some interesting, uh, development, but at a lower, at a lower density. Any, any feelings on that, on reducing that to five units an acre? Or any, anything else on something, some of the uses that I talked about?
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, I would, um, be very much in support of reducing that to five units an acre, um, as I believe was proposed initially by Alderman Roberson.
That's correct, yeah.
Commissioner Slattery?
Um, just would like a little discuss, oh, am I on? Would like a little discussion on the three-story maximum. Because right now, you drive through Nashville, if you've lived here for more than a year, three-story means tall and skinny. And I, I just wonder if three-story is something we really need to consider or if we need to bring that down. Because five units per acre, three stories, those are tall skinnies.
Right. Uh, yeah, I think in, I think in this particular area, uh, the limit would be 35-foot tall, which you could squeeze a, a three-story in. I think, uh, with, with how the planning staff is envisioning the potential for this area, I don't think it would hurt anything to limit that to two stories. Cause I think everything we're thinking about, you could do that with two stories. And you're right, if we had, uh, if we had it at 35 feet, uh, then, um, uh, then with the way this i- is going to be, you could, you could get that tall, some of those tall skinnies. Uh, this would limit it, but, uh, it'd just be two-story. I, I, I think actually that would, that would be, that's a good idea, uh, to do that.
That, that would be my preference.
Okay.
You know, if I ran the world.
Is everybody else kind of okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah, so I love, uh, reducing it to two stories. Um, I like, uh, reducing the density down to five. Um, it's still a residential area. Um, if somebody comes along with an interesting development, then we can give, we can let them go through the zoning appeals process. And if we think it's interesting and, and we want it, we can allow them to build it. But, um, I, I really like that approach because of, you know, what's happened in the past. Uh, when they get up there and they say, it's a by right application and we get sued and they build it anyway. If, if they have to request a zoning variance, at least the city, at least we have an opportunity to say, yeah, that's, that's a quality development.
That's a good point.
Commissioner Hardwick?
The, the zero lot lines, like out at Durham Farms, how many is that per acre?
Well, overall, it's, my, the whole development, but there's different, different things. I think that, I think a lot of those, because there's a lot of open space, there's small lots, but there's a lot of open space. So it all work out, works out on some of those parts.
Five or 6,000 square feet?
Yeah, about 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. Uh, and I think it works out, uh, roughly, probably to about four units an acre, maybe. Maybe four. In some cases, it's five.
If it's still going to be on that same density level then?
Yeah, it'd be very, it could be very similar to that. Um, it's, it's possible. But it, but it all will depend, you know, on what we do on the eventuals, on the zoning, on what we say, hey, this is what your lot's got to be. Here's what the setbacks have to be. And, uh, that will drive, that will drive that issue.
Your common area pack, your roads and dry places.
That's correct. So that'll, that'll kind of be something to work out at the zoning, you know, side of it. Uh, but, um, but you're still limited to five units an acre. So, oh, Grant may be able to answer that.
I was gonna say, on, on, I think on Durham, I think it's, that may be a little misleading because I think the four units, and if, if you're thinking about how the development's packed in there, um, there's, there's open space that also accounts for that four units an acre. So, so it's, it's really, if you were going to look at it without an open space portion of the development, it really wouldn't be that dense, like for five units an acre, four, five units an acre. Because like Durham Farms has open space that's part of that calculation. So they have dense portions and then they have portions of open space. So I think that's, if people are thinking about that in their mind, it's probably more spread out than, it'd be more spread out than Durham Farms development-wise. But, but anyway, I think that's, I just wanted to make that point to make sure that.
A, a good point of reference, and I think Grant told me this, and tell me if I'm wrong, like, uh, the Jackson Townho- not, Stadium Townhomes. We got a lot of townhomes. Uh, Stadium Townhomes, so everybody's kind of familiar with that. Uh, that's not 15 units an acre, but it is 11, 11 and a half?
Yeah, 11.4, yeah.
Yeah, so it's about 11 and a half, if you want to kind of compare what five units an acre is. So it would be less than half of what that density looks like. Yeah.
Yep.
Commissioner Martin?
I agree with him. The Imperial Townhomes, um, is there a way we can, especially since we're still on the, on the peninsula, is to remove townhomes? Um, because we talk about tall and skinnies. Um, that's a cheap development, a trick to really churn, uh, money out of a piece of property as much as possible. And that's what a town, that's what the townhomes are. And we have a problem with parking as it is. And so when, when those, uh, townhomes go live, uh, we're going to have a ton of people parking on the street because we just can't accommodate it. Could we take townhomes, uh, uncheck that box in this area?
Yeah. Yeah, we could do it. And I think it'd still be a very interesting area. But yeah, I, I think, I think we, we can do, we can, we can say within that area, again, it's the brown hatched area up there.
The brown.
A lot of what's in there now is single-story.
Yeah, so there's not a lot of townhomes within that particular area. Uh, so yeah, I don't think that would be a problem. And actually, I, I think it would be interesting, you know? Um, there's other areas you could do townhomes. Yeah. So, in that area currently right now, even though there's older, single-family detached homes, uh, you can't build a single-family detached home there now. So it's not allowed. Uh, so, in that Old Town Commercial. So, uh, that would, you know, we're looking to change that because we'd like to see some of those. But we don't want them to be tall skinnies and, uh, they don't have to be duplexes. They could be single-family detached. So I like that. If everybody else, is that okay with everybody else?
I just want to kind of talk through that because I'm having, just struggling. We're going to allow five residential units per acre then on that, but it's not going to be townhomes. And I mean, maybe just because it's getting late, what are the other things that would be built there than, than just, I mean, besides just very small homes? I mean, putting five homes on a, single-family homes on an acre, why? It's not something that sounds very desirable on that. So that's just.
Yeah.
What am I, what am I kind of missing as kind of an alternative that fits there then on that?
Yeah, what it, you know, what it, what it, we, you could, you could have no townhomes, but you could have, well, you could have some residential above a commercial, but only a unit or two, or something like that. You could maybe have that, you know, if, uh, if you allowed, if you allowed that use. Uh, but, uh, the five units an acre, what'll happen on the five units an acre is they'll end up being a minimum lot size. So.
Okay.
So even though you could do five units an acre, there's going to be a minimum lot size that you might actually not get five units an acre.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, when you, when you calculate it, you know, calculate it out.
Okay.
Uh, but actually, I think we've, didn't we, uh, I think actually as we're talking about that, I think, I think four units an acre on the residential would actually be okay. I think we'd be okay on that. Uh, because, because that's actually what I think will happen anyway. Because of just that reason, uh, you really won't be able to, by the time you get the lot size and then you have the setbacks, uh, you're not going to probably be able to get that yield anyway.
Okay.
Uh, so four is probably more realistic, uh, to get that. So we can, we can reduce that to four units an acre.
Commissioner Longmire?
Mister?
You're lit up?
No, I said, did you say mister?
I said commissioner. I'm sorry. No, no. It's late. It's not that late. Give me till 10 before I start.
Yeah, I feel like I've been here a long time though. Um, are we talking about, is, what are we talking about voting on tonight?
Yeah, I, I don't, I think what we're, I think we're going to get a consensus of changes that you're going to direct the, the planning staff and the consultant to, hey, go back and make these changes to the plan, change it, get it out to the public, get it back to you guys here, uh, in April for you to consider, uh, consider approving it next month.
Okay.
With these changes we're discussing right now. Understanding that we could make those changes and you might not like it, or you might want to make some other tweaks, uh, next month. But this at least gives us the direction on how to, how to cha- how to change this. So.
Well, I just was wondering if you were expecting us to vote on that tonight?
No, no. I, I, I think there's so many changes that we're going to make. Uh, I think we're going to be better to keep the public hearing open and just carry this forward on the agenda, uh, to the April meeting. And then, and then maybe either finish it up there, or we might have to go one more month. Uh, but if we can make the changes that we get a consensus about, then we might be pretty close, uh, to, uh, to something that can get a majority vote.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. Just one more question on this mixed-use brown maroon area. What, what currently is the density that's allowed for senior housing? Because it specifically says senior housing would be allowed in this area.
Yeah, the current density is 20 units an acre, but that's not allowed just by right. You'd have to get a conditional use permit, you know, to do that. So you'd have to go through a process, uh, to get that. And then actually with the changes that we've made tonight to this, then that would be something, uh, independent living, uh, independent living, you'd, a nursing home or independent living, like a 55 and older housing, uh, you'd have to get a conditional use permit. But actually, for this area with the changes that we've made, uh, I think we probably need to not allow those uses. Not allow the opportunity for those uses with what we're, the mix of what we're going to do. I, I don't think, I think they would have fit in a little bit better with the 10 units an acre, but now that we're down to four, I, I don't think that's going to, it's not going to, it's not going to feel right, uh, as it develops. So I think we, we take those completely out of, out of there.
Strike senior housing?
Yeah, strike senior housing. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up though. Yep, in the brown.
Commissioner Longmire?
Sorry.
Uh, you're fine. No, okay, you're fine.
Uh, the last area here is the, uh, blue area, that bottom kind of water blue area. Uh, this is the area that's currently Old Town, uh, residential, uh, that used to allow, a couple, about a year or so ago, uh, until the change, uh, allowed 15 units an acre multifamily, uh, at the highest density. And then, uh, the change was made to reduce that down to five units an acre. And what, what the, uh, plan is proposing to do here, and, and you can do townhomes and you can do multifamily there today at those densities. Uh, we're, we're looking with this, uh, plan to remove that and protect that area. Probably do something, we may not create a new zone for it. We're thinking our SR2 zone, which, um, um, is maybe a more appropriate zone for that, which basically just allows for single-family on a little bit smaller lots, very similar to the development that's already, the, the single-family older development that's already there. Uh, and so that's what we're looking, uh, to do within, within that area. And this also allows a three-story max within that area, but I don't know, is that something? I don't know that there's a three-story home in that area right now. But I, I, that, that's the only thing that I think we need to maybe discuss.
I would support taking that down to two-story maximum.
Two stories? Okay. What about?
And definitely, you already said Keith, taking the density down to five, or is it still on the table at 15?
I think take this down to four.
Yeah, it's, it's at five now.
Oh, it's at five, okay.
Yeah, I think take it to four. Since the maroon area is four, then I think that area should be four as well.
Okay.
It would, it would, it would blend, it would blend better. If, if every, if everybody's okay with that.
SR2, does that allow senior living in townhomes?
I think it does with conditional use. I probably, I need to check, but I think with a conditional use, it probably does. So, yeah, I bet it does. I don't, I can't picture it right now. I'm not for sure. I'm not for sure if it does, uh, but we may, uh, we may change that in a text amendment when we do, not this, but whenever we might do a rezoning, we might take that and remove that out of there. For that, for that, for that particular zone, because it's a little bit more, uh, you know, it's a little bit smaller lot size than SR1. So like a typical neighborhood, it would be. So we can do that.
Commissioner Hardwick?
For Keith or Grant, if you, if you have a topography issue where you have a walkout basement, uh, from the street, you're looking at two-story, but the back of the house is three, is that?
No.
Do we need to make sure that we protect that if there's a topography?
We'll need to do that, we need to do that in the zoning.
Okay.
In the zoning, we need to make, we, we have to clear, good point, we'd have to clarify that, uh, to do that, but we could do that. Let's, let's make sure, Grant, we do that. Yeah, it's roofline. We got a way to measure it right now. Yeah.
Commissioner Slattery?
One more question on the sen- the senior housing. Do we have the ability during this process to relook at the minimal parking that must be included in development? This came up on the discussion for the, the facility on Sanders Ferry, where I think we all collectively agreed the number of spaces that were allowed didn't seem adequate enough for the number of units that were being build, built. And if there's an opportunity to look at that here in the blue or in the maroon, or overall for the city, to relook at minimal parking space requirements for senior living?
Yes, we can look at that. That probably will not be done necessarily just for this. It would be citywide. And whenever we might do, say after the, uh, the, uh, future land use plan eventually gets approved, and then we might pursue rezonings or text ammen- and also amend, text amendments to the zoning ordinance. At that time, we have a couple of other things that we're looking at as well. And actually, some issues about parking are on there, not that one, but we'll add that, we'll add that Caitlin to our list, uh, to do that. So yes, we can, we can do that here in the near future.
Director Freed?
So is ev- is everybody, is there a general consensus about where we are on that? Now if we can move to the next area, Free Hill Plan Development Area, this is that area that's, um, keep going forward. Yeah, that area right there in the blue above the little orange B, I think there's a consensus there from what I have understood here, uh, to, uh, keep that industrial and commercial and take that area and the area left of it that's got the, the orange hash area, that's industrial right now, and just take that back to what it is. It'll still be within this, this, um, uh, Westlake Plan area, but we'll just remove that back to industrial and not change that.
Can, it, does industrial allow for office as well?
It does now because we, it didn't, but we just changed that.
Okay.
A year and a half ago to encourage more office.
Okay.
Uh, so it does now.
Okay.
Yeah, so it could be office.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, is there a consensus on that? I think that's.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and we'll remove that. And then Focus Area B, this is where Tennessee Quick Cash, uh, that glass building, there was a car lot there. It's kind of within that area. And this is where we had identified, uh, for a potential mixed-use development, just kind of like we've talked about before. Uh, mainly, mainly looking at trying to ignite a transformation of kind of change what's there to potentially something, you know, something else. Uh, so that's, that's what that is.
What's the density that's being proposed there right now?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's 15 units an acre. Yeah, yeah, 15, 15 units an acre is the proposal right now. Staff definitely feels like it could go to 12 and still be, you know, a possibility. Or it could be like. Or it could be like we've done in the others and just allow five, which still gives an opportunity for something, but it is a very low, lower, lower density.
Would it, would it be viable at ten, with that fifty-fifty, um, retail?
Possibly.
That, that, that commercial residential mix?
Yeah, I think, I think it, I think it would be, yeah.
Do we know how many acres approximately that area, so worst-case scenario, how many acres at a density of ten?
Uh, we've got that, I've got that number right here, hold on a second. It's good, that's a very good question, um.
My jet lag was bad a while ago, I'm awake now.
Yeah, that is nine-point-five acres, so at fifteen units an acre, it'd be a hundred and forty-four units. At ten units an acre, it would be, uh, ninety-five units.
Yes.
If you could assemble it.
And that's what I wanted to understand, was worst-case scenario, how dense would humanity be right there?
If you could assemble it, ninety-five. Under a hundred units.
Okay.
If you did it ten units an acre at fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Which, I think that would still give it a possibility to do it. It'd be great if we can keep that in there, but, um, probably if we can't keep it at ten and go fifty-fifty like what you're talking about, then we may wanna consider just making a commercial, kinda just be Main Street Commercial.
I think what we're talking about with office and industrial across the street for Free Hill, um, that gives the opportunity for a quality development that is not overly dense, but at the same time, it can support the folks that live there, 'cause there's not grocery stores right around there, I mean, but that would, that would allow the opportunity for a little retail shop, that sort of thing, and that while also kinda giving a workforce for folks living across the street there, and then maybe help develop office on that, so I would, I'd be open to, to that.
To office?
Well, we talked about that as part of the Free Hill, office being carded, but then across the street in that B area right there, taking the density down to ten as part of a mixed-use development on that, so it, it's dense enough that it actually has some folks living there that could work across the street, but it's not, it's not nearly as dense as what's being proposed right now either.
And we could put a, we could put a limit of two or three stories on it.
How tall is that glass building?
Sorry, we could put a limit of two or three stories on it. I believe that's, uh, four.
That's what I was thinking.
It's in a hole, but I think it's four.
It is, but it's in a hole, yeah. It's like two stories above sitting at Main Street.
I think most of our city zoning is thirty-five feet, so.
Yeah, most of it is.
Okay.
It's kinda like, we'll have some that are lower than others, but it's, it's okay to do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yeah, I just think that we're talking about a lot of specifics on, and I know anything of who wants to do this. And I kinda feel like it was, we're a little premature, we kinda put the saddle up and now we're gonna go take a ride on the horse. So, from the real estate standpoint, which is my, my life, I think you need to think about what you're saying before you say that's what you wanna do. It's all come up awfully quickly tonight. It's my wonderful words.
Commissioner Martin?
Um, my, my hesitation with that, and this is 'cause, um, 'cause of the car wreck, but, uh, density there right on Main Street could create a, a traffic issue. If, if that blue area is going to go back to commercial, um, you know, maybe we can provide something. Lower than ten would be my, my vote. But that area is similar to some of the other properties like that hu-, original hotel that's now kinda run down. Is, would the Westlake Plan be a great tool for designated areas to receive TIFs or, or some kind of benefit to, to stimulate development or rehabilitation? Would that be possible?
It's not possible for us to do, but yes, it would be possible. The other body, the, that you serve on would have the authority to do it.
Yeah, I thi-, I think the idea is if BOMA wanted to pursue a TIF, and of course, the planning staff would work with BOMA on that, uh, but if BOMA wanted to pursue a TIF, it would encompass the entirety of the whole area, and then all of the proceeds would go back into just that area.
Okay, so the Westlake wouldn't designate areas that would be eligible? It would just be, um, available to the whole?
Yeah, well, what would happen, what, what happened with the TIF in that instance is then, then BOMA would prioritize, these are the things we're gonna do with it. I mean, for example, if it generated five-hundred thousand dollars a year, it could be, hey, we're gonna give a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, planning economic development to help people with replacing their existing signs with more attractive signs, a hundred thousand dollars to give matching grants or something for facade renovations, and then the remaining three-hundred thousand to go to whatever public improvements might need to be done, you know, to road improvements or a turn lane or, you know, different things like that, so. Uh, but BOMA would end up dictating, the planning sta-, Planning Commission wouldn't dictate that, but, but BOMA would say, hey, here, here, here's what we're gonna do with that. And probably would need to identify that gen-, pretty specific, fairly specific, uh, in setting up the TIF, kinda where, where the funds were gonna go to in those pockets.
Director Free, just, there's something rattling around in the back of my brain and just, um, which is always scary, but just refresh my memory, is there eventually plans, or is there something in the works to create, um, an exit from three-eight-six onto Free Hill Road?
Yes, yeah, that's, uh, in the widening of, the widening of three-eight-six, which is under, the, the planning of that is underway. Uh, so that's, that's, it looks like it's gonna happen in the coming years, it's accelerated, actually. Uh, as a part of that, there'll be a new interchange, just like Exit seven and eight, six, seven and eight and all that. Uh, there'll be an interchange at Forest Retreat.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, that'll, that'll come out through there.
That's where my thought process was on going from the ten, or from the fifteen down to ten on the density for this nine-point-something acres right here on that, because quite frankly, you know, again, I'm gonna try to be a little bit deep, that glass building's been an eyesore for years, and those properties right there have been an eyesore for years, and I think that we, we need to give a little something to get a better development there on that, because I'm afraid that if we do, if we take it too far with five, we, it, that might be what the land use plan calls for, but nothing will ever get done, because it's not viable on that. And with a new interchange at Free Hill Road and three-eight-six, I think it could keep some traffic off Main Street then, because it'd be a straight shot down to it on that. And so that's where my thought process was on that, so, um, because it's not adding to traffic then. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners?
If not, the next one would be looking at the Midway multifamily behind the Waffle House. Uh, it's, uh, if you can kinda hit that, Lauren, it's up there on the left, that blue area, it's right there. Currently it's zoned commercial, next to it, that little sliver right there, uh, that is the Near Water development that's under construction right now. And kinda what we were looking at that was, uh, looking at making that multifamily, uh, that's all multifamily behind there. The idea there was that, if you remember when we approved, some of you were here, when Near Water was approved, but there was that whole issue about them getting out to the light instead of having to go in front of Waffle House. So encouraging maybe a residential development there would allow for a quicker opportunity probably for a road to be built or a driveway that would then give those folks the opportunity to exit by the light, and so that's kind of what that is. But right now it's zoned commercial, so really the thing is, is do we wanna just list it as future multifamily? I don't see the city rezoning it to multifamily, but we might identify it in the future land use as that where somebody could, could come forward with a rezoning in the future. Or do we just leave it commercial?
I'm, I'm confused, is that not multifamily right there right now?
Yeah, that's all multifamily, but this is, the, right there, it's just that piece right, right there, it's just about.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not very big, it's maybe an acre. It's, yeah, it's three-point-four acres.
Okay.
That's all, it's not very big.
So three-point-four acres behind, directly behind Waffle House? Okay.
And the Exxon station.
Okay, okay.
So you're, you're talking about, if it's fifteen units an acre, you're talking about like fifty, fifty-two units at fifteen units an acre, so.
Would that be required to be mixed-use there, or would that be just straight?
No.
Okay.
It'd just be straight, that'd be, that's the only part of any of this that actually is just straight multifamily.
Okay.
For the folks watching on YouTube, can you just describe what that?
Yes. Yeah, it's right there by the, um, if you see where it says green, it's green and it says extension. If you go up above that dashed white line, uh, and you see the orange kinda stripe, that's the Waffle House. It's just that green part right behind it, but it's not all of those apartments. It, it's just right there. That might show up, I don't know if that shows up, where she's, she's circling that. It backs up to the, Near Water is in between it and the exit ramp, uh, but it's within that area.
So they're grading it and they're building the project?
Yeah, Near Water is, yeah, and that's, this map here, that previous one, if you go back to that previous one. Uh, there it is. See the area in blue that says Midway behind Waffle House? That's the piece that we're talking about. Yeah, that's the piece that we're talking about.
Commissioner Evans?
Uh, you're, sorry.
Yeah, I, I was against that Near Water when it came through. It was of, I, I didn't think that we should once again convert commercial property along a freeway access road or inter-, uh, uh, the bypass access road, change it from residential or from commercial to residential. Because it's such a mess, you go in front of the Waffle House to get there, it, it's just, it, it was a boondoggle. It never should've been done. However, since it's been done, uh, I agree with changing that particular piece of property to residential, because it, it only fits with what's behind it. You can't, you can't fit anything on that little piece of commercial property behind the Waffle House, and it definitely needs an entryway back into Near Water. It, it was a mess when it was done, it never should've been approved. But now that it has, well, that little piece fits nicely with what's going on there.
Okay. Anybody else on that? Uh, let's go to the next, let's go to the very last one, Anchor West Neighborhood, Focus Area A. This is the area behind Tractor Supply that you can see in the orange up there in the far, far left, A. Uh, this is, uh, a focus, our last, this is the last one we're looking at. The focus area that has fifteen units an acre, uh, just, um, just a mixed unit, really more of a mix, 'cause it's a larger area, a mixed-use neighborhood where you really might have a bigger mix versus more of an urban kind of a mix. This might be, uh, a little bit, little bit different. Uh, but it still would be fifteen units an acre. Uh, this is something that, um, you know, staff has, has looked at, and we, we feel that we still would like to keep the opportunity for something there, uh, but it necessarily would not have to stay at fifteen units an acre. It, it could be ten units an acre to still be, uh, potentially viable.
Commissioner Hardwick?
What's it zoned for now?
It's zoned, it's a plan, it's a commercial plan development, and it's a shopping center.
Could it be anything else?
Not if they reason, not unless they rezoned it to another plan development or rezoned it, 'cause they're locked into that plan development.
'Cause it's under contract? So I don't know if they've submitted to you guys and you can't talk about it yet?
No.
But it's clearly under contract?
Yeah, no, they.
Or at least, that's what I'm told?
Uh, I think it.
Did it fall out?
It could've been if it's, if it was, was it a month or two ago?
Yes.
Yeah, there's.
It's fallen out?
There's nothing I'm aware of now.
Okay, so it's fallen out then?
That's on that property, uh, so there's, there's nothing, you know, currently.
My concern with that is the moment we let it go multifamily, it'll get snapped up in a heartbeat.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think that is a great piece of commercial property, whether it's industrial,
Yeah.
office flex.
Yeah.
Would work real well right there. Uh, yeah, is it a good place to put multifamily? Because it's right next to the exit and people can get on and off and it won't impact a lot of the roads. But I really am concerned, there's so many multifamily developers looking for land right now. The moment we rezon it, it's gone.
And crime grows up when it's that close to an exit.
Yeah. Yeah.
It does.
And we don't need that.
Right. So, a consensus to just remove that back with the orange and just, just kind of community retail?
Just, just so I'm clear, is this the big field of broken-up concrete?
That's correct.
Yes, I, I would, I would fully support that being put back to industrial, commercial, and not residential.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree, Barry, that will be one huge multifamily development plan within a blink of an eye.
And it would, and it would just blend over to Rivergate with no, with no break, nothing, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's got a pod on it right now for shopping center?
That's correct, it's locked in.
But if we go back and say, hey, it can be mult-, not multifamily, but industrial, office flex, car lot, whatever, it would be open for them coming in and saying they wanna redo the pod toward the uses.
Yes, probably the number-one use of interest on that lot has been and probably will be in the future is a, is a car lot.
Car, that's what I.
But I will say this, and I've talked to a lot of different folks over the last couple of years about that particular, you know, site. The other one with a Jeep dealership, that was by right, I mean, you know, it, the, a car lot was allowed there, and it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice. But this one, it's a shopping center now, and to add a car lot, you'd have to come and add a use and maybe amend that pla-, amend that development plan. And when that, when and if that would, were to happen, I think it's very important that, you know, that we maintain something along a buffer, a tree-lined buffer, not just landscape, but something pretty hefty, you know, along Main Street if we were to allow such a use uh, uh, on that, on that pro-, on that property.
Ideally, I'd like to see it be some type of office flex or industrial.
Yeah.
Some type of general business versus a.
Right.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's gonna be a shopping center.
I'd prefer it not be a car lot, um, just because we're, we're getting back into some of the reasons that we want to look at the Westlake District anyway is that it's one big automotive, automotive moment until you get to Shackle Island, so that would be my preference, is that, that's not one of the approved uses of that property.
Okay. Okay, so I got a, I got a clear understanding of that, so I think, I think we've got, Grant, and, um.
I wanted to ask one, I'm sorry to, hold, explain to me what the office flex you're talking about, Barry. Excuse me, Commissioner Hardwick, I'm sorry, we, we get a little late in the evening on this.
It's all good. So, office flex would be a building where you would have office in the front, warehouse in the back, so it might be twenty-five to fifty percent office with the other part being a warehouse, so they'd have a drive-in dock door in the back.
Okay.
Maybe a dock eye door, a lot of businesses use that, because they need office space as well as they need some type of production, storage, and that's a really nice product when it's done well.
Yeah, um, the only thing.
And it needs to be, it needs to be tilt-up concrete, block, brick, not metal.
The only thing that concerns me about that right there is just traffic, I mean, because there's no good way, something like that, obviously, in a warehouse, they're gonna wanna get on three-eight-six to get to another state on that. That's a hard place to pull out of, on there, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have to go, you're gonna have to go through Rivergate, get on at Conference Drive, or come back, come right back up Center Point Road and get on there, um, and that only. Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, but I don't wanna get lost in the weeds and that, I just wanted to kinda throw that out there, that that's a little bit of a concern, but, um. Director Free?
Yeah, I think, I think we've got the consensus of the changes. Uh, did you have any questions, Kevin, about that, Grant? I think we've, I think we've got a clear direction. I think we. I think we've, I think we've got a clear direction. I think we can make these changes, uh, and, uh, and get a doc, get a amended document back out, maybe in the next couple of weeks, you know, or prior to, uh, the, uh, the April meeting. Uh, so, we'll just have to work, we'll work with a consultant to see if we can, what we can get, what we can get done on, get done on that. Uh, but, um, but I think we have that, and I think those, uh, those changes, just like I said at the first, at the first of the, uh, meeting, prior to the public, public hearing, uh, the, the plan at the point of what we have now with these changes, it's not that the plan that we had at the beginning was the greatest and that, you know, and not, not implementing that, we're shortchanging ourself. This is a process, I think you described it very well, uh, John, but this is, and, and this is a process that we're going through, and then I think we're seeing the results of the process is you're using your all's, as the planning commissioners, you're using your understanding of our community, and you're taking the citizens, the comments from the citizens about how they feel about it, and then that is being translated into the changes from, to the proposal. So, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, and that's exactly the way the, a good planning process works. So, I really appreciate it.
With that, I'm going to entertain a motion to defer this till our next meeting and to keep open, obviously, the public hearing to our next meeting as well.
Second.
Uh, got a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Um, before we go on to the rest of our agenda, does anybody need to take two minutes, use restroom, anything like that, or we just want to kind of press on ahead?
Press on.
Okay, sounds good to me. Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's see, we're gonna jump back down. We'd moved, we'd moved Westlake. I just want to thank the members of the public that were here tonight, too. Thank you for your interest. Appreciate y'all being here on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
We have our cons, next on the agenda after was amended, um, we actually need to approve the minutes from our February seventh meeting on that.
Move to approve.
Right. We have a motion to approve, and did I hear a second?
Second.
A second, okay. Um, Lauren, will you call the roll on that, please?
Who is the second on that?
Um, Commissioner Martin.
Uh, Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Upstain.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Upstain.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
All right, that's seven and two extensions.
Thank you. Um, consent agenda, Timothy, I think you're on this one. Um, well, we're just, was there anybody that had any comments or wanted to pull anything off the consent agenda? Yeah, just one, okay. Hearing nine, um, Timothy, do you want to say a brief word on this before we vote on it?
Uh, sure, this is, uh, the condition to legacy Hendersonville could be a.
Sorry. It'll be a, um, condition on the, on the backside of that, uh, uh, assisted living facility at six seventy-four East Main Street. Um, they've got fifty-eight units existing, and they're proposing to add eighteen new units on a one-story addition, and they have agreed to all staff comments.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to per, to accept.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
All right, thank you. Item seven on the agenda is site plans. Um, we have campus drive, parking lot, site plan. Um, Grant, you were on this and said applicant would like to discuss planning comment number two and public works comment number one. Um, but Grant, would you tell us a little bit what we got going on here, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is site plan submittal from the property owner to convert four existing residential homes located in Old Town Commercial to vacation rental. Uh, vacation rentals are used allowed in OTC. It is, uh, not allowed in residential districts, uh, per our grandfathered ordinance under state law. And, uh, um, changing the use from commercial to commercial typically do not require sidewalks, uh, and, and curb and gutter. Uh, however, it's kind of a cla, changing classification from residential, uh, from commercial, I'm trying to say it, from a residential use to commercial use. So, uh, it does kind of change the site dynamics and the, the parking requirements, landscaping, um, a lot of different things that, that come into play there. So, um, in, in this, we, we've looked at that and, and required, you know, said that they need to install sidewalk or, uh, uh, pay a fee in lieu and also do curb and gutter. So, um, the applicant did request either a waiver or a fee in lieu for those two items. And, uh, um, you know, I think we were looking at that and kind of felt like sidewalk would be a good idea there, uh, just because there's some in that area, but, uh, I think we, we could, you know, we could certainly entertain either one based on whatever the planning commission thinks.
Do we have a representative from the developer here?
Yes, can you, can you read?
Yes. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Marshall Boyd, uh, one-ten Eventide Drive, Hendersonville.
Okay, Marshall, um, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just add a little bit to what Grant, a very good explanation. I'd let you know that the improvements they identified in the comments, we would prefer the, the payment in, in lieu instead, just for the mere fact that anything that we do might not work with, with the city had planned in the future. Like, if the city plans to do a big project, you know, whatever we did in that area might not fit i- inside that. And so, obviously, it's a lot more economical for the city to go in and do a big project at one time instead of us, you know, doing one, you know, one piece of that. And, and so, we're more than happy to pay the, you know, the payment in lieu to the city for, for a future improvement at a later, later date.
Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hardwick.
When have we ever seen the city do a huge sidewalk project? Let them do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Uh, I don't think it's any secret how I feel about, uh, vacation rentals, but I would like to point out, I know this is, this is, uh, appropriate in that zone, but I'd like to point out that we are taking four affordable homes away from our children and grandchildren and renting them out to people from out, outside the city. After the discussion we had earlier about how we need all the units, all the, the additional marketing efforts for units for our children and grandchildren, when we allow the vacation rentals, we took those four houses out of Hendersonville residents' hands.
Commissioner Hasty?
Uh, maybe a couple of questions on a different item.
Sure.
On, uh, and I have a hard time, what's the, that lot sixteen? And just below it, that triangular parcel?
Yes.
Who owns it?
The city does.
The city does?
Yeah, we have.
That triangular parcel of real estate?
It's existing right of way, as far as I can tell. I've maybe missed.
We can't let you put parking on our property.
Right. Well, what you see before you, we're gonna pursue, um, there is two options. We want to pursue a right-of-way abandonment. Uh, i- is one idea, and the, the second idea is we're gonna move the parking to the rear of the lot behind the, behind the building. So, we're, we, we agree with staff comment that we'll accommodate, we'll accommodate the parking and just move it to the rear if we cannot get the abandonment, you know, from the, from the city.
Well, according to zoning ordinance for.
Yeah.
Old Town Center Residential, all parking should be to the rear or side. And lot, when at the top, they're gonna be backing straight out in the street.
Right, it, right, and the, for, for those two lots, you know, we're, we're more than happy. We've agreed to staff comment. We, we can put that in the rear of the lot. That's not a, not an issue. We, we didn't have time. We got the comment back and didn't have time to change the plan, but we're, we're okay changing the plan to reflect that.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to get that issue resolved on the right-of-way, on that parcel or whatever before we could.
And, and we, we don't need, we don't need that right-of-way, sir. We, we, we can move, you know, we, we can work with staff, move the parking in, in the rear, you know, behind the house, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't utilize it.
Okay, it'd be a total revision to the plan, though, wouldn't it?
It'd be this, right, it'd be the same amount of parking, uh, just be behind the, behind the structure.
Commissioner Martin?
Um, as we look at the Westlake plan, can we remove, um, rental properties from it? Is that appropriate? Vacation rentals?
We would, we would have to consult with our city attorney. Um, the way the vacation, and John knows it as well as anybody, but, uh, the way the vacation, uh, laws, state laws are, uh, is the state changed, uh, their requirements uh, that what the city of Hendersonville has in place currently, uh, they don't allow that anymore. But we were, we were one of the few that was grand, were grandfathered in, and I'd need to talk to our city attorney about that because if, if that was changed, we've got to be careful not to lose our not, kind of grandfathered status on that with the state statute.
Okay.
So, it's a little bit, little bit of a complicated thing. It, and basically what it is, is we don't allow vacation rental of renting the entire, you know, house, uh, for less than, I think, thirty-one or thirty days uh, uh, in, in any of the areas except for Old Town Commercial and for, um, general commercial. Now, it's very possible when we do the zone changes, it won't affect this property necessarily, but.
Yeah.
Um, um, this is within that area of where, isn't this within the, the maroon or brown hatched area? So, it's very possible that the uses that are allowed in that new zone would not include, um, vacation rental. So, that's possible. But again, that specific issue, I, I would need to talk to our city attorney about that.
Okay.
To make sure. Okay, good question.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, I would be supportive of a fee in lieu in this situation. However, I do agree with Mr. Hasty, and I do think we need to get another look at this after you guys have explored the abandonment. I would like to see what that looks like, um, with that parking to the rear of the structure.
Okay. So, would, would we, I guess, what would that look like? Will we bring that back?
Do you want to, do you want to defer to next month?
Well, uh, we could.
We'll get you earlier on the agenda so you're not security.
Um, okay, so, you'd, you'd prefer to see the parking in the rear of the lot, bring that back? Yeah, we can do that.
So, you, are you requesting deferral to?
Could we? Could staff? If, if, if you just, I guess, relay to staff what your wishes are for that, is that something staff could approve at that level? Or would you prefer to see it at, at the planning commission?
Yes, please.
Yeah, uh, it's something that i- if the planning commission chose to approve, approve it with the payment in lieu, uh, tonight with all staff comments, then, uh, then the applicant could work with the staff, uh, to get, get, to get that corrected. Uh, but it's up to the planning commission, you know, to determine what you, what you guys would want to do with that. Uh, but if you wanted to approve it, you approve it with, um, with all staff comments and, um, uh, with the payment in lieu, and then they work with staff, and if they can't satisfy staff, then we bring, we bring it back.
Yeah.
They have to come back before you. Uh, so, that's, that's an option that you can, you can do.
Commissioner Hasty?
I would have a hard time voting for it with that many exceptions to it, particularly with that right-of-way, and that's a big parcel for some sort of abandonment or, or whatever. There's a whole lot that's gotta take place there. I, I would vote for a deferral, but I would have a hard time voting for it like it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd kind of like to echo what Commissioner Silkwood said. I'm in favor of the payment in lieu.
Sure.
Given that, um, I do think that it's something that ought to come back before this body, though, instead of just working with staff on that. Um, that's what I'd prefer to see, but it, I'll put the ball in your court, though.
Yeah, we, we can, we can request a deferral, come back with a revised site plan and present next month.
Okay, sounds good. Like I said, we won't have you here till ten. That's, thank you.
Put your ducks in a row.
Yeah. Um, and we're just, I'll make a motion that we, on behalf of the applicant, that based upon their request to defer this to next month.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Altizer. Uh, Lauren, will you call the roll on that, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Next up is preliminary plats for Curtis Crossroads subdivision. Um, do we have a representative from the developer here on that? Thank you. And Sydney, I believe that you all, you're working on this one?
Sure, yes. This is a request for a straight zoned, which means kind of by right subdivision uh, that meets the minimum lot size of twelve thousand five hundred square feet. Um, this is, if you go down Sanders Ferry, as referenced kind of in the public comment section today, if you go down Sanders Ferry till the very end and hang a sharp ninety-degree right, this would intersect with that. So, staff, particularly engineering, had some comments to, uh, that need to be addressed by the applicant tonight about that.
Could you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Yes, I'm Harrison Turner with LDA Engineering.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to?
Yes, um, in talking with staff, originally, we, I think the access on Curtis Crossroads is kind of the main point of concern. Originally, talking with staff, we tried to mirror what is existing there with the driveway. Um, but since that's one house currently there, and we're proposing to have ten building lots, um, they were not comfortable with having that in the curve, um, having the cars come around the curve. So, they wanted us to reconstruct that curve and make it into a T-intersection. However, um, if we reconstruct the curve and make it a T-intersection, you can see it's a wooded lot in that interior corner, which makes it a blind left and a three movement that would conflict. So, we proposed to make it a three-way stop um, condition based on the, uh, site distance triangles that we cannot achieve by making it a T-intersection. Um, so, that's kind of the main, main point of concern, uh, is that intersection right there. So, we would be, uh, redoing that geometry to allow for a T-intersection and making it always stop to improve safety, um, at that intersection.
Thank you.
So, let me ask, is it right there in that curve that's the lot you're talking about?
Yes, uh, we would be just south of that curve, uh, to the bottom of the screen, and we'd be taking away the curve and making it into a T-intersection with, uh, three-way stop control.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would like to hear from the city engineer about this specific intersection here, this ninety-degree turn and this proposed T-intersection.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr., Commissioner Silkwood. Um, the Public Works Department actually has concerns about this being a three-way intersection. Uh, we're not in support of it. We requested a safety assessment of the intersection and, and did not receive, uh, adequate response to that safety assessment, analyzing the intersection for, uh, crash history, uh, traffic volumes, uh, a variety of, of things like that. Um, the, the response back did not address those concerns. So, uh, in, in our opinion, uh, we're not in support of, of a three-way stop at this location. Looking at T-dot traffic volumes, uh, we have roughly three thousand vehicles, thirty-three hundred vehicles two-way direction using Curtis Crossroads at this location. As they're proposing it, those thirty-three hundred vehicles will be stopping for a development of twelve lots. Uh, and, and, and based on what I have seen in, in the submittal back to us, we can't support it.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, in essence, what you're saying, it doesn't, um, it doesn't support a three-way stop right there, even though for safety's sake, potential. So in essence, what you're saying, it doesn't, it doesn't support a three-way stop right there, even though for safety's sake, potentially, that would be better. But to stop traffic for three lot, for twelve lots, just doesn't make any sense.
Based on the submission of, of the response to comments, it does not.
Okay.
They haven't adequately addressed our concerns.
Got it.
Just speaking of that, if I can.
Sure.
So that was, we have not done a full traffic assessment. We did a geometric assessment, and based on the geometry of the curve and the geometry of the proposed T-intersection and the site distance issues, it warrants per MUTCD to be a stop-controlled intersection if you go to a T, T-intersection. So we did not go ahead and proceed with counting things, just due to the timeframe of receiving the comments and then coming before planning commission. So if that's something that is required, then we can go through that process. But based on the geometrics of it alone, MUTCD and ASHTO both agree that it should be a stop-controlled intersection.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I live two blocks from there. I drive that curve every day, several times a day. It's as dangerous as any place you can be on. If you're coming up the hill, turning to the right, you're in pretty good shape. If you go off the shoulder of the road and avoid the people coming down the hill, they can't see you any more than you can see them. When you come around that corner, if you're going downhill, you better hope that the people on the other side coming the other way are off the shoulder, or you might wind up in that guardrail, which, by the way, every time it's repaired and put back up, it lasts maybe two weeks before it's torn out again. The, the road doesn't have any slope on it, inward slope, so whatever happens there, your tires are gonna go if it's wet. I would like to see a lot better site plan on this, but it's got several things wrong with it. That pond that was there for all of those years never held water, but it was a retention pond. It did exactly what a retention pond does. It held the water, framed it out over a long period of time, and it took care of the drainage there. But what we've done, just recently, within the last year, somebody has allowed somebody to build a house just below that property, right below where that pond used to be, right in the drainage. How, how they ever did that, I'll never know. But the house is too low. It, it is gonna suffer from, from wet ground from now on. And if you come back to the access to this, if you look around on Sterling Road, there is a road that comes off of Sterling that goes back to the other houses. I don't know who owns that property back there, but it dead-ends. Looks like it was supposed to be a street going back to the, actually, the back of this property. I would like for somebody to explore that a little bit and see if maybe there's another entrance that can be worked out to get into that. That's, that's just not a corner where we can add anything else to it, not without a major, major overhaul.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, thank you for being so patient and waiting so long.
Not, not a problem.
I apologize, on behalf of all of us, for the length of the meeting. My concerns about this relate to volume of traffic, being so close to Sanders Ferry Park, that being a very busy thoroughfare at all times of the day, and how that stop sign will redirect traffic through residential streets to avoid that intersection when traffic starts backing up at that stop sign. I can see that being a, a real bone of contention for some people that live right around there, one of them potentially about ten people down from me. So, yeah, it concerns me to suddenly stop traffic right there and, and how people will self redirect. Thank you.
Commissioner Longmire? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, I mean, due to the concerns of the city engineer, I would like to see a traffic study done here, if you're gonna pursue this fully. Commissioner Evans actually alluded to an idea that I had earlier. Have you not considered making the entrance to this subdivision off of Wood Duck?
Yes, that was a original consideration, but unfortunately, our property does not reach down to Wood Duck Lane. The back end of our property is north of Wood Duck.
The back end of your property.
Where is, where is Lot thirteen? Point that out, somebody point that out to me.
Lot thirteen is right, right there.
Wasn't that going to be deeded over to someone? I read that, it's been a long night.
Yes, it would be deeded to the property to the south, which is the property that has access off Wood Duck. That was his, as part of the ability to obtain the property, he wanted to keep that section undisturbed for his property.
Let me ask another question. So my understanding is that the property owner you're speaking about, off of Wood Duck, I believe, 115 Wood Duck, is actually the person who is applying to get this subdivision done, is that correct?
He is selling it to the developer that I'm representing.
Seems like something could be worked out there, so that an entrance could be created off of Wood Duck.
To that, the preliminary meeting that we had with the applicant did propose it off of Wood Duck with improvements to Wood Duck Lane and a cul-de-sac instead of an intersection with Curtis Crossroads. So that was the initial preliminary discussion that we had. And then this plan came back, which obviously has some significant concerns and implications for traffic pattern and flow.
Commissioner Longmire?
No.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Just comment for the applicant, maybe even a suggestion to, do you want to defer this to next month?
Yes, based on all of the comments from planning commission, let's defer to next month, perform a full traffic study, and then look at alternative options to connecting in the subdivision to either Curtis Crossroads, or see if we can work out something on Wood Duck.
Okay.
So I applied to defer.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to accept your request for a deferral.
Second.
And we've got a second from, I think it's Commissioner Slattery down there. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin? Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, looks like we're from jumping around. We've got, turn it over to Director Freed, he can tell us about staff level, projects been approved, and kind of take us all home here on this. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm jumping, whoop, it's getting way, a little too ahead of myself, so, okay. Before we do that, we've got a couple, three resolutions to address. The first is Resolution 202301. It's a resolution adopting the proposed revisions, the Hendersonville subdivision regulations. Director Freed, do you have anything that you want to say on this? I think everything's been kind of approved by Commissioner Hasty, and that's where my deferral is gonna go to.
We had a good meeting with, with Commissioner Hasty and made the majority of the, the corrections and suggestions that he had, and we're ready for full consideration and approval.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve unless you've got some comments you want to add. Commissioner?
I don't know, it's about a hundred and eighty-three pages here we need to go through tonight. You know, I, the staff has done a whole lot of work and, and they've made some changes. And, you know, is it a perfect document? I don't think so. But the one we had wasn't perfect, and it'll change, and this one, it'll be changed again in a few years. But we, we've made some, some progress. And, and a couple of areas I think that the staff is working on are documents that are referred to from the subregs that are not actually a part of the subregs that can be, you know, handled with the staff and the public engineer. And it, you know, and it can be changed. We can modify this thing, you know, at our own discretion, pretty much. It's not a document that's approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So what I think we got is a workable document, and I'll second his motion to approve it.
Thank you, sir. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin? Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
All right, thank you. We've got two more resolutions. We've got twenty, or 202302 and 202303. I want to group these together and take these as one item here on this. It's a resolution, the first one's a resolution recommending acceptance of the completed streets in Durham Farms, Phase One, Section One, including the pump station turnaround. And the second one is a resolution recommending acceptance of the completed streets in Ivy Point at Patmore Place. And so I want to take these together on this. And so I'll make a motion that we approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
We got two seconds, who wants to claim that? Okay, okay. Well, Commissioner Longmire, I'm gonna give that one to you for the second. Now that's, Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll punt things over to Director Freed to tell us about staff level projects that have been approved and kind of close us out here.
Yep, I can answer any questions anybody had. There's really none of them that I'm looking to highlight, but one thing I want, I will mention, the location of the Black Eyed Pea. We did have an application this week for Whataburger at that location. So there's been a lot of questions about that, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to, to share that. Also, a Dutch Brothers coffee in front of Live TV Church that's right over here behind Publix, kind of to the right of their parking lot. So there's a Dutch Brothers that's gonna be coming before us, that and the Whataburger and April meeting. And I just wanted to share that, but that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
No chicken? There's, there's no chicken?
No, not this month, not this month.
What will we eat? Okay.
With that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. We got a second, I believe, from Commissioner Martin down there. All in favor, please signify by saying aha.
Aha.
Hearing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you all very, very much for...